Good evening and welcome to the special select board meeting for March 13th. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've started an hour early today because we want to work on the warrant before we have -- 7:00 will be our budget forum and then after the budget forum we'll go back to our regular meeting. Why don't we begin? Town manager is late because he's on an emergency management call with MEMA and the head of the fire department and unfortunately, Bill Lowe is sick today and we're still waiting for Tom. But we'll begin with resident comments because we'll have to wait for the town manager for announcements unless someone else has an announcement from the select board. No, okay. Liz, you want to tell us your name?
Yeah, yeah.
And what group you're from?
I know the stuff. Lisbon, 34 Lisbon Circle. I just wanted to come as a member of the Energy Task Force partly through the school committee. I wanted to talk a little bit about something that you'll be talking about today and that Marie has brought up. It's thermal imaging through a company and grant program of Grinspoon called SS. That's correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to tell you some highlights about it. It's a very beneficial program for residents. It's going to provide our homo -- the residents in the town valuable information. The thermal imaging has been used for over 30 years. They -- it locates insulation voids, air leaks, moisture in your house, thermal bypasses, thermal bridges, and leaks in your hydronic tubing and slab concrete, which is really important if you have that type of heating. And to do the thermal imaging, you need to be -- it needs to be cold out, so now is the ideal time. And this is going to assist our residents with energy savings and money savings. And I just wanted to give quick -- we had this done at our house when we first moved in. Our heating bill when we first moved in, in the winter, was $600 a month. So after having the thermal imaging and Mass Saves came out and gave us some, what's it called, subsidized recommendations and we used it to get a new furnace and insulate our house. And now our bill's like under $200 a month. So it's a tremendous savings for everybody. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other resident comments?
I'll throw some questions.
Yeah.
Sorry. I jumped in front of you.
No, that's okay. Richard Elias, 608 Frank Smith Road. A few months ago, I proposed that the town look into providing some funds so Long Meadow Community Television could put the home games or the school teams on. Looking at the budget problems that we've had this year, which is better than most years, there were so many things that should have been done that had to still be postponed. I don't think it's logical to believe that that will come to fruition for the next couple of years if it can be done by the town. But there is another option. Long Meadow Community Television is a nonprofit organization. That means that people who want to contribute to that fine organization could send their money in and have it go towards providing that service. It's worthwhile. When I see those kids out in front of Armadas selling hot dogs for their team on a beautiful day, they could be doing something else, I know how dedicated they are to their school and their team. But that's their choice and I'm glad to see our school provides that determination for them. If people could call Long Meadow Community Television, ask about how much it would cost, because they have the information, I won't even try to take a guess on that. But if we could get a fund going for that that goes into the community television, it would be great for the town. It would be great for the students. And look at sometimes that people pay hundreds of dollars to bring games in from all over the country or soccer from Europe or something like that. And they enjoy it. I can't think of anybody in this town that doesn't feel good when they learn that our team wins something. So maybe $10 to $20 going into a fund for that would be something worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any select board comments? The only thing, as I was going to mention during select board comments, go on a little more discussion on the thermal imaging. Debbie actually found out in our current beacon on page eight, there is a discussion on the thermal imaging project and we're going to -- the select board has to vote on this before it goes to the residents. I was worried we had to get that done today because I didn't think -- I thought the cold weather was all gone, but the cold weather is not gone yet. So I thought everyone could please contact the town manager from the select board if you have questions about the program and how it's going to be run. I did request information if we could have two town buildings since they're going around town doing the thermal imaging. And I did not get a definitive answer on that. So that is something I'm still trying to track down. If we could get one elementary school and one and maybe the police station because the Energy Task Force pinpointed on the town side that the problem was the police station and on the school side, it was the elementary schools. So I have not heard an answer from the woman who's in charge of the program yet, but there could be other questions people have in regards to how to op out of the program if they don't want it or how to opt in if they really are definitely want to have their house imaged. The question also was occurring about how we would gather the programs that would subsidize the needed repairs in some of the residents' home. I think that the goal of the Grinsman Foundation is 100,000 houses in the western Mass area and we're not -- they're not quite there yet, so they're anxious to get more towns on board. And of course, if any of the residents have comments or questions to send it on to either the town manager or myself and we'll try to get the answers to those questions and then we can direct the town manager to get the answers to our questions on the thermal imaging. So we won't really have a full discussion until next Monday and that's when I'll put it on the agenda.
Marie, what are we being asked to approve? I mean, it's not costing the town anything.
No, I think that--
Do we have to authorize them to drive up and down our streets?
Yeah, I think we have to agree that not only that, but there has to be an element, a part of the town that helps get the reports out. So there's a way we could do it. There's multiple ways the towns do it, either through the billing or there's opt-in, but the towns do have to have a vote of some kind to allow the project to go through. That's the understanding I had when I attended the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And I was a little concerned about how we could do it within our schedule of meetings and that's why I brought it up last meeting, I brought it up this. I thought we'd have some more answers and hopefully this week we'll really get those done and we can discuss it thoroughly next Monday's meeting and then the board can decide whether they're going to go forward on it. Okay? And so this article, as I said, on page eight is a very nice article, thank you Debbie, that explains it. I'll also forward the email from the Grinsman Foundation in regards to the program description and they have sample reports that are given out. But we have a little bit of an opportunity to customize it to our town on how we think it would best be worked out in Long Meadow.
What are you referring to, opting in and opting out? What are the opting in and opting out of?
Well, some people do not want to have the reports. They have no interest in getting a report. And other people, I think that what they do is they prepare the reports for like the top 10% that could really use it, but some people who are not even in that top 10%, in other towns, they had an interest in getting a report. Some people do not want the report at all.
What's the end game? Is this the firm that is offering remedial services?
No, no. What it is, is the Grinsman Foundation has found that Mass Saves, the majority of the money that the state has put into the program is really paid for the auditors who come in and they walk around the house. They feel that the majority of the money really should be spent on the remedial issues. So what this is, is it's a free service of auditing and then they're putting together programs in order to help subsidize it. So they're hoping it'll be a more efficient way of doing it because the statistics coming out of Mass Saves is that after the auditor comes into the house, only 10% of the people really follow through on it.
Who's providing this free service of thermal scanning?
The actual company is Essence, but I believe that the foundation is paying for it.
I was going to say, they have to be being paid for it.
Yes, yeah.
I don't think the days of those nice people are long gone.
No, no. And this is a company that's doing it across the country, so--
Yeah, well, there's several companies do this type of work. I sort of was wondering, there has to be an end game. That's why I'm wondering whether you're opting in or opting out of.
Well, they're hoping everyone will opt in, but some towns have expressed concern that some residents do not want to have the report and so there is a possibility of opting out. So there are different ways of customizing the program to what we feel our residents would prefer.
Another note too, I've done a lot of thermal imaging in the summertime too for heat, for your cooling loss too. So it's -- you can also spot moisture in walls and everything else. I mean, there's a multitude of uses for it. It's not just heat.
Yes. Yeah, that's true. This one is going to be, they wanted to be below 50 degrees at night and so they're aiming towards heat loss or as Liz said, moisture. And it's often to be able to see things that you wouldn't normally notice, like a crack in the foundation or something else. And the goal is to try to help the residents. It's really a service for the residents to help them with their energy costs. So we'll talk about it more and bring it up to vote, but please, as you look into the program and the materials, send the questions to the town manager so we can have a thorough decision on the 20th. Now, did you -- now, welcome back. Stephen and I explained how you were doing the emergency management call.
Yeah.
Did you have any announcements? I'm sure you do.
Yes. So we've already put out a town-wide phone call. Nonessential town offices, which means basically everything but the DPW, police and fire, will be closed tomorrow. I know the superintendent sent out the announcement that schools are also closed tomorrow. We strongly encourage people to not travel. I just got off a conference call, as you mentioned, with Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency. The start of the call was a presentation by the National Weather Service in both Taunton and Albany. And it's a real deal storm. 25 to 30 mile an hour winds, gusts of up to 50, especially higher elevations. We are in the 16 to 18 inch range right now, but a, he said, a reasonable worst-case scenario could be adding four to five inches to that. I truthfully think we're going to end up probably closer to 20 with the way the shading is going that you see it's, every time they do the forecast, that area 18 to 24 moves closer to us. So we will be prepared to establish an emergency operations center locally. The State Emergency Operations Center, the EOC, is going to be running tomorrow starting at 6:00 AM. There's a parking ban in effect starting tomorrow morning at 5:00 AM and will be in effect through Wednesday at 5:00 PM. The storm is, the storm and the cleanup are expected to last well into Wednesday.
It's scheduled to start about 7:00 AM?
Four to 5:00 AM.
Four to 5:00?
Yeah. But between, so I think the thing that, there may be thunderstorms going with the storm as well. I think the key thing that people need to be aware of is that all of this is going to happen within about an eight-hour time span. So snow will be coming down at potentially three to four hours, three to four inches an hour, which is essentially white-out conditions, especially coupled with 25 mile an hour winds. So it's going to be treacherous to be out there tomorrow, so we encourage people to please stay home if, and don't travel unless absolutely necessary. And like I said, our DPW will come in this morning and they'll start at 1:00 AM this morning to, or 1:00 AM tomorrow morning to pre-treat the roads, but it's going to be going fast and furious for the duration of the day and like I said, probably into Trash collection, so if you're on the Tuesday route, it'll be Wednesday and then everybody else is going to be delayed today. So Wednesday will be Thursday, Thursday will be Friday, Friday will be Saturday. Waste Management has already made that announcement. And we're just waiting on the governor to declare a state of emergency. That has not happened yet, but they are looking at that. So it's going to be, it's a serious weather event and so we urge people to really take all necessary precautions. You know, so if you need, if you do have an emergency tomorrow, you know, call 911, but otherwise, just trying to stay safe.
When they go state of emergency, aren't, isn't it more severe travel restrictions imposed?
We are hoping that a travel ban will also be imposed. I think they're waiting to see what happens with the conditions. I mean, obviously, our primary concern with that is not having to have our fire department respond to something on 91, so that's why we are rooting for a travel ban tomorrow.
But I mean, even for the local community though?
Yeah. Yeah. Like I said, it's not going to be a day to be out. And if, there are times I'm sure where our plows won't even be able to be out on the roads because of the winds and the rate of snowfall. The guy from National, and I mean, and I'm trying not to alarm people with the guy from National, when the guy from the National Weather Service said, "We're seeing, we're going to see snowfall rates at, you know, at a level that we haven't seen in a number of years," that kind of got my attention. So like I said, everybody, you know, just do the best they can and stay home and stay safe.
And Stephen, when will, so during the day of tomorrow, you'll decide whether things are shut down on Wednesday?
Correct.
And people will be able to find that information online or on the news? How would they find that?
Uh, yes. Online, through the news media. I mean, I think, I think the likelihood of loss of power is there because of branches and winds and all that other stuff. So we'll do the best we can. We will also use the, we may use the all-call system as well if we feel like the conditions merit it.
So we'll hear it on our phones?
Yes.
If they're still charged?
Yeah, we'll get a phone call if we decide that that's the, if power is out, then we would probably try and use a phone call.
Okay.
So that's, that's what we've been doing today is getting, you know, it's sitting in the fire chief's office with the sun shining, you know, sun pouring in the window, having this call about this really major weather event, like seems so counterintuitive, but everything we've seen from the forecasting is, it's a serious thing, so don't be, don't be lulled to no fault since the security by the nice weather today.
Okay. Thank you. Any other announcements?
Um, no, that's all I can think of right now.
Okay. Any other select board comments? Do you want to go back to the warrant? And we'll work on the warrant until we start at 7:00. Thanks for coming.
See you, Liz.
7:00 with the, our budget forum. And Debbie, you highlighted what we didn't vote on, right?
Right.
Okay.
I do recommend article number two.
That's what I was saying. Yeah. But you don't know what that will be.
For people at home, article two is our snow removal fund.
Did you guys have started eating yet?
No.
No, no one has started eating.
Get up and go at will.
Yes.
I don't want to be the first one to eat.
You won't be.
Yay, thank you.
So I had planned to eat at home and that--
And then you changed your mind? Oh, because the phone call came in?
Then they skipped the phone call at 5:30, so I may have to take you up on that.
All right, sounds good. So everyone grab something and we'll let, and then the first one we will start will be, what's just the first article you want to begin with, Stephen?
Um, I do--
18? You want to do 18?
The budget, you'll see tonight after the forum. Nine we'll talk about later. 10 as well.
Is the same thing, yeah.
Same thing.
Revolving fund? Did we need to do that?
The revolving fund actually with the municipal modernization act requires also a bylaw now. So that, that's why that Article 15 is stuck in there. Council is preparing the bylaw that would go hand in hand with Article 16.
Is he bringing it in hand tonight?
That I don't know, but the municipal modernization act did create that for some reason. It is something that is looking to be repealed. I was at an informational session today in the legislature. I mean, it really doesn't make sense to have a bylaw and town meeting vote on it every year. Anyway, it potentially will be repealed, but at this point in time, for Article 16 to go through, a bylaw is required and that's what 15 is set aside for.
So we'll probably want to see the bylaw. So we'll see if he brings it tonight.
Yeah.
All right. Do you want to talk about 18?
Sure, we can talk about 18 briefly. I think that's, Article 18 is the setting aside and appropriation of basically what we had left in the treasury if everything else ahead of it passes. For basically an IT account similar to a fire truck fund that will, that will make annual contributions to, to fund ongoing IT needs in the non-capital category, meaning devices and peripherals that have a use life of maybe three years, but they're all individually less than $25,000. Things like servers, like the one that's on the capital plan this year, those things would remain in capital, but these are just more the user interface devices. We met with the school district and talked about developing a framework to govern this account and it's something we'll be working on. It may be a little cart before the horse to have, to ask for the fund before we set up the account, but we know that they have IT purchase needs, both the town and schools have needs that are going to be, that are going to need to be met and we just wanted to get started. You know, I think if, like I said, it's, we just simply haven't, we haven't had the time to develop a policy. We just, we started this conversation relatively late in the, in the calendar for the budget, but I would, I would recommend setting the money aside because we know, even if we don't have an IT plan, we're still going to need to make some purchases in the fiscal year.
I think the thing we didn't do is we did not eliminate the word account within the article, which we would, which is something that was talked about at the last--
Capital.
I'm sorry. Capital there and also the third line, I think, in the explanation where it says, "Steps in funding IT capital needs." We would, again, eliminate the word capital in those two spots.
Well, I know the last time, one of the questions I had was, "What are other towns doing?" Did you ever find out what other towns?
I had not. Had time looking at it. I think that's something we will look into as we develop the plan. You know, like I said, it's counterintuitive to put the money first, but we know the purchases are there. We have a list of things that need to be bought. We are hoping to add some sense of structure before we just kind of go out and buy things so we know what we're going to do next year and the year after. But if, you know, the board really feels strongly that the money should not be spent until we have a structure in place, it's just going, the total for FY '19 is just going to be that much higher.
Stephen, I, it's not directed to you necessarily at all, this comment, but I guess my skepticism is based on our poor performance of our IT steering committee or lack thereof. And, you know, I think that it's fair to say that to some degree the select board envisioned issues like this coming up and when the IT department was set up as a, primarily under the guidance of the, you know, the control of the school committee, but certainly interdisciplinary, both for general government and schools department, it was, we asked for the creation of a IT steering committee and so that, and I specifically recall that part of it was to review capital needs, review other needs and set budgets and do all this kind of stuff and we've gotten nowhere. And so, and not that we've gotten nowhere, but nothing's been achieved on that and it leads me to a skepticism saying that the town has been very comfortable in the past, setting up what I'll call, you know, community review of capital, whether it's through the community preservation requests or the capital planning committee, which is part of our charter. And here we've got a significant amount of money that's being asked to be distributed without that review, even though there was supposed to be something in place. My personal opinion is that this is a good opportunity for me on the select board and to go back and say, "Let's do what we said we were going to do," I think it was three years ago or four years ago, when we tried to set up a IT steering committee and since we haven't done it, I'd like to hold off until we do it.
I can't disagree.
I totally agree with what Mark's saying. We've had, it sounds sarcastic, but we've had time enough to develop a warrant article, not time enough to follow to the development of a program. And we've got a new director that's been in charge of IT for over a year now, Stephen?
Yeah, I thought that.
Yeah, so, and it was in the works before then and it doesn't, it just doesn't seem like they're being responsive to what we keep saying about the formation of the IT committee and the functionality of that committee. And we're talking about a lot of money. I mean, you're talking $84,000. That's not a minor sum. I understand our whole commitment for our community is large, which even comes back even stronger that says we need a well-thought-out, well-implemented policy instead of say, "Give me money and I'll give you something later." I just, it seems, doesn't seem an appropriate approach to the select board to have an approval fund with that type of logic.
So, if I may?
Yeah.
In fairness to the IT director in the schools, part of this is on my, is on me. We did talk about this over a year ago and the need to basically relook at the IT MOU and the service level agreement and those documents that have existed, I think, for more than four years. Because it was clear that we weren't living by what they said. And so we should either change the documents or change how we operate. And I had started engaging the schools in that conversation, but the previous superintendent had announced her retirement and so it didn't make much sense to go through it with her and, you know, tie the hands of the new superintendent. As you mentioned, our IT director was relatively new. And then quite honestly, just got pushed off the radar screen by other things. So when we did meet to talk about this, everyone agreed, the new superintendent, the IT director, our finance director, the assistant superintendent for business for the schools, all agreed that this is something that is worth doing and doing in a comprehensive way, including the MOU and the service level agreement. You know, to really correct exactly what you guys are saying. What you're saying is absolutely right and fair. The only thing that I would say is unfair is I bear much more responsibility than the new folks for, in the school side.
We can share blame with you.
Yeah, that's fine.
This board has no problem. And I, I don't think, it's not a game, it's not a thing of finding faults, Stephen. It's just the fact it's just, it's a major program.
Yeah.
I mean, if you walked in with any other $85,000 request of this board without a very strong justification, they'd show you the door. And I think this is, we know it's a need and it should be valuable And I think this is, we know it's a need, and it should be valuable enough for the people that are experts and been hired to run this program to develop this, to come to the board with it. That's the only comment.
I understand. That's fair.
Yeah, and my concern is that if we just put the money aside, it's not a glamorous thing to work on. The MOU's been sitting out there for a while, and we've been talking about it, and my concern is once you do the MOU, it might be arguments on how the money's supposed to be spent and what it was supposed to be spent on. What are we reaching for? We know when we put the fire truck fund aside, what we're reaching for in the number. That might change a little bit, but at least we know what we're doing. Here, we're talking about possibly devices, maybe we need to do an investment in, you know, expanding the network or the fiber. We have no idea.
It is itemized. I mean, there's a specific list, and we haven't submitted to the board. I think we do have that information in the spreadsheet, so it is, I can tell you to the device what we'd be looking to replace in the next year, but-
And we also have the lease as another warrant article, so they're going down for another four years on the lease, so I think that buys us a little time to even put this on the fall town warrant where we can really see the MOU, see where we're going with it.
I think if the board will be willing to go back, look at this maybe in the fall.
Any other comments or concerns? Should we put a motion on the floor to remove the article?
Do you want a motion to remove it?
Well, I think-
I'll move, we'll remove Article 18 until the formation of the IT steering committee and a better definition of a long-range plan.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Can I add one note? We did have a discussion last meeting that we are theoretically working with a closed warrant at this time, and we are not even authorized ourselves to remove items from a closed warrant.
I know Debbie was researching to find Dave's opinion, and I apologize, I didn't get it out to the board.
Oh, okay, so Dave's, but the other attorney's showing up later today, we can find out. Should we openly reopen the warrant?
I'm just saying what past history does.
Not yet. Let's get it all, do it once.
Do it once, so we're going to remove this, but we're technically not removing it, and then we'll-
When you open it, all the changes go in.
Okay.
And then you close it again.
Does that sound right, Richard?
As long as we open it and close it.
I don't think we have any pending citizen petitions either that would be impacted by this.
Okay. All right, so the next Article 19?
Article 19 was originally in the budget, I shouldn't say the budget, was originally in the warrant. It was taken out once we set aside money or were steering money over to the IT because there was basically a zero balance left in free cash. Now that Article 18 is technically going to be coming back out, there is a small amount of free cash that is left, and I would like to have that transferred over to the operational stabilization fund, only if it's nothing else, it'll just boost our reserves for when we go to bond for any particular project, we'll just have a better reserve position. Again, as you know, Moody's put us, the comment was, we had low reserves for like-rated municipalities across the nation, so we just, again, it's kind of, it's area to boost that up.
I'll move we approve Article 19 for inclusion with an amount to be sorted out after all of our budget discussions, and that will be the remaining free cash.
Right. Second.
All right, in discussion, I have a question. I noticed that our stabilization fund and free cash number percentage is sort of going down a bit this year. Will this get us back to last year's?
It will not get us back to last year. The bigger drop is free cash. We started the year with $980,000, and then as much as we put in some money into the operational stabilization fund in the fall, and this amount, it's not going to be near what our free cash is going to be next year. So that's where the biggest decrease went, is in free cash. I'm anticipating about $600,000 of free cash, so there's a drop of almost $400,000 in that portion of our reserves that we will not be making up, unless free cash comes in higher, which, again, if there's a lot of turnbacks, it could very well be, but I'm not anticipating a tremendous amount of turnbacks.
And the reason for that, I understood in the commentary, was tighter budgeting the past few years?
It's tighter budgeting on both the revenue and the expenditure side. We're trying to stretch that dollar a little bit further, trying to get, you know, better numbers in as the budget goes through, because, again, everything is tight. So when you do it that tight, there's less to be returned at the end of the year.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. And you'll have that number for us at town meeting, just like with the snow?
Right. You know, I can tell you right now, I mean, wherever it goes, it's going to go into Article 2 for snow and ice, so if we put, you know, $25,000 more in there, it's going to be $25,000 less here.
Okay.
In essence, it's going to be that same relation.
All right, the next one that we have to deal with is stormwater utility.
So I circulated the draft bylaw to the board. It's not in the warrant because it's several pages, I think 10 pages or so in that neighborhood. One of the things we talked about is, you know, having this cost go on top of the property tax bill. And what I would say is, unfortunately, I don't have, I expected to have it today, the subconsultant who does the number crunching for us on our rates, it was out of the office last week, late last weekend and today. But the goal is to, I think my new goal, hearing some feedback from you and from the community, if we could get, kind of drill down into the costs specific to the MS4 requirements, that's $150,000 to $200,000 range. And so we could use the bylaw as it was presented and the fee structure, that option C that the board's adopted, and simply set the rate at an amount that will only yield, you know, $200,000 a year in additional revenue, which would make it a very small amount on people's water bills. So that would be my recommendation, and I just don't know what that number is, whether it's a buck or two. I mean, if it was, if $12 a month generated a little over a million dollars, you could probably do some math in your head, or he could do some math in his head, that's why we have him here, to figure out what it would be, but really just a nominal fee, and, you know, if the board wanted to implement a nominal fee and freeze it for two years or something like that, just to at least get it started and generate some revenue to cover the additional costs, that would be the recommendation. And again, I just don't have the spreadsheet to show you what the number is.
Is this approved at town meeting only, or does it have to go for a vote?
It's a bylaw, so it would only, it would just be approved at town meeting.
Okay, and then the attorney general?
Yes.
So you're saying, instead of before, we were talking about taking all of our stormwater costs, which are about a million a year?
Yeah.
And we were talking about pulling that out of the budget and it funding this way. You're saying just fund the MS4 additional costs? And are we going to know, when are we going to know what those are exactly?
We have a projection of it today. Like I said, it's projected to be about $150,000. And then I just, you know, I just rounded up the $200,000, it covers some administrative costs and maybe some unforeseen things that come up.
And again, I would assume this is implemented in FY19?
Yeah.
Right, would it be implemented, it wouldn't have any effect on this year's budget? It's all for the next budget cycle.
So the stormwater utility would not go in till the MS4 goes in? And do you want to explain?
No, MS4 is in now, we just wouldn't implement it locally until FY19.
The next budget cycle.
So we would have to absorb the extra costs, or are the extra costs going to be built in and escalate each year?
The extra costs are absorbed in the FY18 budget, that would not change, so yes, the general fund would pick up those extra costs for this fiscal year, or I should say for next fiscal year, FY18, but FY19, we would start making that transition in a small step.
And your recommendation is part of the water bill?
Just, we would bill it on the utility charges. So the water bill or the utility bill?
Okay. Mark?
I guess I, I guess I have a few issues and concerns with this. The first one is that I'm not sure we've done enough to build a town-wide consensus, and for many people, despite all our discussions here, town meeting will be the first time they see this. And it's a pretty detailed item, and, you know, we've seen a lot of discussions, even on the board, I heard at one point a discussion of, so what does it mean to nonprofits, the not-for-profits in the town, and do we really want to charge the churches, and do we really want to charge the this and the that? And there's also, for me, an issue with our overall town budget in terms of, does this now create a, I don't know if it's the fifth or the sixth, the subgrouping within our DPW where we would then be able to distribute DPW costs, just like we do water and sewer and building maintenance and roads and separate, and what's that impact on, you know, on the overall budget? And I think, finally, the, I think, Steven, one of the comments that you just put, although it sounds like a reasonable thing to do, which is get it in place and do something nominally, I think that's actually going to be counterproductive, because I think people will potentially see this as a, well, they're just saying $3 now for three years, or $3 a month, or $10 a month now, but once they get this in place, watch what they do. And in fact, what we were sent early on, and if you look at what our stormwater cost might be with all this, it's really the equivalent to having another water bill. I mean, in terms of that amount of money, you mentioned $12 a month or something like that, but I've seen numbers even higher than that, and I'm just wondering if this really doesn't warrant a separate town meeting on its own. Not a town meeting within the town meeting, but something to really start a discussion with the people in town. This is a, you know, a significant change, I think, it's a significant extra department, it's a significant extra charge, and I think we need to do a different, take a different approach to educating people for what it means and what, and something beyond just trying to do it within the confines of the town meeting, because otherwise I think it's not going to be very successful, given all these questions that we just can't answer because we're not in a position to answer.
Right.
Richard?
I think your approach is honest and straightforward, Steven. I like the approach of saying we're just going to share the cost of what MS4 costs above and beyond. I don't think anybody could be more fair than that, because you're not wanting to take in, I think we talked about it before, is what's the cost of MS4? MS4 may not actually stay, we don't know. Right now it's there, and the people have to understand there is a cost of implementing MS4, and it's a unfunded mandate that's been placed against this, our local government. I would imagine there's grants for the studies and writing up the reports and implementing, but after that, it's yours, all the costs thereafter. I don't know, you know, what Mark says about having a town meeting strictly for this, I'm not, I, anything's a good idea, but I'm not sure there's enough people interested enough that would come to the table to have a round discussion that would, I mean, we can't even get people to town meeting where we do an $80 million budget, and now we're talking about something that's $2 or $3 a month on their, a month on their utility bill for something that is new unfunded mandate. So I understand what you're saying, Mark, I'm just not sure that it would ring anybody's bells, but I do like your approach on this, because this makes sense, that you're going to the taxpayer and you say, we're only going to charge you what this increase is costing us. It's an unfunded mandate that's been given to us by basically the federal government, it's not even state requirement, it was brought in federal-wise.
So, Mark, to your point, and this is, you know, this is the wonderful part of our form of government. So last year, I've said, I recommended, actually, no, it was, the select board directive was, get a warrant article, prepare a warrant article for select board consideration to put in town meeting warrant. We did, went to town meeting, it passed narrowly. And the warrant article was, develop a bylaw and funding structure for stormwater utility. And I think we've always discussed it, I agree with you, Mark, a lot of people aren't really focused on this and don't know what it's all about. We know that is, you know, in addition to meaning unfunded, it does help us cope with an unfunded mandate, but it is a revenue generator. As we've talked about many times, there aren't a lot of options for local revenue generation, and this is one of them. So we followed through on the process, we made the deliverable in the timeline that we said we would, and so I think it's just a matter of really public policy choice on the board's part of what to do next. I don't know that there's a right way or a wrong way, I think it's, it's really, like I said, it's a matter of choice for the board of how you want to proceed. I do agree with you, though, I think putting it on the warrant and having a discussion about it, even if we motioned to table it during the meeting, at least gives everybody, gives a captive audience a chance to hear about it and discuss it. I mean, I think Richard's right, if we had a special town meeting in the middle of the summer, we'd get, you know, 100 people. Whereas, even if we did this-
No, you wouldn't. No, you wouldn't get 100 people.
Or, yeah, or if we did this in the fall, we could do it in the fall town meeting, but I know we don't necessarily enjoy doing major policy initiatives in the fall town meetings. So, you know, where do we go? I mean, we're either going to, we're either going to do this, you know, or not, and I just think you're right. I mean, I never really, shouldn't say never had any expectation, but I think it's, I think it's realistic to expect that the town would not be, would not warmly embrace this at this time, but I think when we're presenting some other expenditure items, I think we want to show the town that we are looking at different ways to generate revenue and protect services for the future. That's, to me, the 200,000, or even if it's 150 for the MS4, that's legit. Those are real costs, those are an unfunded mandate. But the other part of this is, it helps preserve services for the future if, if or and when the town has greater constraints on its property tax levy. Whether now's the right time to do this or not is, it's up to you guys.
I guess the question, if I could, how do you get the town to read and comprehend a 10-page bylaw at the town? I guess that's the big-
You don't.
Well, I think the town-
You have it available for viewing, and you just have a one-page summary. I mean, a lot of this, it really is, here's what it does, here's what an ERU is, and here's how much it's going to cost you.
The question is, if you're really saying there's going to be $150,000 in cost coming up, that means there's going to be cuts to the budget, the school side as well as our side, if we don't prepare for those expenses that are coming up. Now, when you said we would only charge to the amount of the MS4, that's not written anywhere in the bylaw, is it?
It's not, it was something we were going to add to it, but again, it's-
Well, so where would you add to it? In the bylaw or in the warrant article?
The bylaw allows the select board to set the fee.
Right.
And so the fee is going to ultimately be on our fee schedule.
Okay.
And so we would just adopt the bylaw and then set the fee.
So would the warrant article say the fee will be set to the needs of the MS4?
The description, the warrant article would say, vote to approve the following bylaw, and then in the description, we could say, the select board has stated that if this is adopted, the initial fee, the fee for fiscal years 18, or 19, 20, and 21 is going to be $2 a month, or whatever, you'd say that in the narrative, and then it's just a regular select board vote to approve the rate.
Well, would we maybe put it, that we've established a policy that the charges for the stormwater utility should reflect the needs of the unfunded mandate of MS4?
I don't know that I would advise binding the hands of future select boards, because you don't know what-
Well, they can always change the policy if there's a crisis, but I'm just worried that the residents will feel it's a switch and bait if we don't-
This is the same town meeting, by the way, that wouldn't allow us to set water rates by, with a fixed rate, because they were convinced we were going to set some ridiculous fixed rate in the water rate, too, so, you know, I'm not sure, Marie, any of that would work.
Well, I think, I like the idea of reflecting the MS4 to the actual cost of the stormwater utility. I'm just concerned in how we're going to clearly translate that so that the residents trust us and believe this is the way it's going to happen, and that's my concern. But I think it's worth it to peg the two together. If we're not going to take it all out, all of our stormwater costs, put in the stormwater utility, and then have a write-down on property taxes, which is what I would prefer to do, so that people understand their property taxes are going to go down, and everyone equally shares the cost of stormwater utilities, but if we're just going to do this for the MS4, that depends on how the-
It's a good point, excellent point that you made, because, you know, we sat in here saying we were just going to charge for the MS4, and if we really mean it, then you figure we were willing to put it in print. But her point's valid, too, it could be a very attractive one if you said, okay, here's the cost of the stormwater utility, and we're going to reduce your taxes this much. Now, it's not going to cost them any less, but it's just the way it shifts around. But both approaches are honest. The only thing, Steven, I would refrain from, and you know, you've already said it, I would refrain from saying it's a revenue generating mechanism, because I don't think anybody finds that favorable anymore. And the fact is, the truth is, you're wanting to offset the impacts of MS4, because regardless of whether we put it on the real estate tax or it's on the utility tax, it's still coming out of the homeowners' pockets.
Well, and in fact, one of the concerns I hear is that if you make it a stormwater utility fee, it's no longer a tax, and therefore it's not deductible, and for most people in Long Meadow who itemize deductions, there's a reduction in their, you know, the amount the federal government's paying for it, and so they're saying, well, I'd rather pay $4, have it deductible than pay $3 and have it not deductible, given the fact 25% will be paid by other groups, and there might be an argument for that for some people. It's a tough call.
Yeah, well, we just had a mini-town meeting right here.
But those are the arguments you can hear, Richard.
I know they are, and it's a valid argument.
So we have to decide which way we're going to go. Are we going to tie this to the MS4 costs, or are we going to take our true costs of stormwater utilities that everyone has the benefits of and spread it out among the residents and the institutions in town? Which way are we going to go?
Well, one, you're going to have to show a reduction in the taxes.
Right.
If you're going to charge them on the utility side, and you've already went on camera saying, if we're going to do this, then we're going to reduce your taxes, then there's a commitment to do that.
Well, would we reduce the taxes if we limited it only to the costs of the MS4?
No.
Yeah, so there's two ways of doing it.
How many fractions of penny is that on the tax rate, Paul? I mean, right?
You know, $100,000 is about 0.05, right?
It's not going to move the needle, and the tax board would do that, it'd be-
Right, and that's why I, personally, I don't think we, as much as it makes sense to, and we'd like to tie it to MS4, I don't think saying that that's the extent of this is, makes a lot of sense to do, especially because down the road, you know, we've got two or three or four stormwater outfalls that we got to take care of. I mean, you know, it's going to be expensive. The difference between Long Meadow and many other communities, you know, there's a lot of communities for whom this is going to pay the cost of separating their sanitary sewers from their storm sewers. Long Meadow doesn't have that. We have so many tingles and outfalls that ours aren't tied together at this point.
We've got some.
We have some we don't know about, I think.
We got some around old reports, but we just don't know if they've been fixed.
We may not know about them, but, so, but the issue is, is, so it's a different kind of approach. We're not having to go back and change infrastructure, but, you know, when, I remember when Captain Road collapsed, and Avondale Road's collapsed, and two or three other roads, you know, and, you know, Crespe Circle collapsed, I mean, that's all storm sewer, stormwater.
You have IRFO damage, too, there, wasn't it? Emergency flood relief? Did you have any IRFO distribution of funds within the state for that?
Not that I'm aware of.
No?
So, I think we've got to leave it generic.
I'm afraid if we, in other words, I'm afraid if we don't put it on, we're now hitting our budget up in a year for possibly $100, $150,000 that the general fund's going to have to pay for, which means we don't pay for other things. for possibly $100, $150,000 that the general fund's going to have to pay for, which means we don't pay for other things. So-
But, but Marie, maybe that's the time when you give the people a choice of saying, "Look, you can either, you know, not have this or you can have that by paying for your storm, stormwater utility outside of the tax rate." Because you build the constituency about what would not otherwise happen. And I don't want to use examples, because there are always bad examples, whatever you choose. But, you know, ultimately, we make decisions. And I see Karen in the, in the-
Singling Karen.
And I'm not going to pick out, but, you know, but to say, gee, we're going to pick on the library, or we're going to pick on the schools, or we're going to pick on the adult center, whatever it is. You know, you don't want to pick on anybody, but we want to say, "Look, we don't have enough money to go around. You know, we've got a significant infrastructure problem with collapsing roads or collapsing, you know, you know, other, other stormwater systems, and here's the choice." To me, that makes a better decision.
But if we wait that long, then I understood from Paul, it takes a while to get this up and going. We're going to have one year that we're going to have to take the hit.
Yeah, I mean, so, let me, let me throw out a different suggestion. To get to the town meeting trust factor, generally, you don't want to have the rate in the bylaw, because that means when you want to change the rate, you have to, you need a bylaw vote. However, and Mike Schneider, if he's not here, will be here, maybe you could have a provision in the bylaw that's presented to the town meeting that sets the rate at this, I say nominal, at the MS4 level, for lack of a better term, for two years, three years, whatever you want to do, and have that bylaw provision sunset at a certain time. And then say, as, you know, the, you know, in the bylaw, it says the rate's going to be X, Y, and Z for these three years. And then say, on June 30th, whatever day, this provision shall expire, and the rate will be set by the, by the Select Board.
Why couldn't you set it with our regular utility rates each year?
You could, but the reason why you add to the bylaw is that it locks it in for town meeting's purposes. So, you, so we're not, Richard, so we're not standing in front of town meeting saying, "Listen, we promise it's only going to be $2 bucks a month for the first three years." There's nothing binding other than your seat.
So, why wouldn't we instead, Stephen, put together a bylaw that says the annual appropriation for the stormwater utility will be set at the town meeting every year? And so, that in May, we set the appropriation, and that gets translated into the, into the rate based on what, you know, so we, just like we do now, going forward, saying, "We need X number of dollars for capital." We go to the town meeting and say, "Next year, our stormwater costs are this, 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 and this." You know, and that would translate into a rate of, you know, $8 a month, or $12 a month, or actually, what we want to do is put it per ESU, right? So, you know, that, that way, we're saying, nobody's putting a fee on this annually, except for you folks at town meeting. And we do it at an annual basis planning anyway. So, why don't we just set the-
Well, Tom?
But, Mark, you'd also have to make a contingent budget, that there's going to be one budget if they pass the rate that's being proposed, and another budget if they don't pass the rate that's being proposed.
Well, in the past-
Or you don't do, or you don't do it.
Or you don't do it. But I can say, whether you're, if you're going to give town meeting control, that you have to have almost two budgets.
Right, but I'm saying, but that's the only way I can see to get this thing passed without the specter of somebody's coming along and going to set crazy, crazy rates on, on the town.
In some ways, we do that up till now, because our stormwater costs are, we're going to deal with this drainage project for this amount of money. I'm thinking of Merryweather, and then the town decides whether they're going to spend the money on the project. And so, we could say the rates are going to be at this in order to handle these projects that are coming up.
Paul, does this fall under the purview of the Water and Sewage Commissioners to set that rate?
I don't believe so, because the Water and Sewer Commissions are completely separate.
Right, it's going to be on the utility bill. So, what would the recommendations come from the town manager for approval by the board each year?
I believe that's how the bylaw is written, that it would, it would be a recommendation, and the Select Board would actually make the, have the rate-setting process.
Do we just approve it as part of a budget?
Uh, yes, yeah. You could do it at the same time, and I could do Water and Sewer. But again, it would be, it would be a separate, completely separate vote and calculation.
You would do it in advance of the budget being submitted.
Right.
So, we would know that the revenue to cover stormwater, stormwater costs is going to be $500,000. And so, we know that the DPW's budget can, you know, have that from the utility charge. And then we figure out the general fund, because I suspect the general fund would subsidize this for a while.
So, so not to-
Like, solid waste recycling is a good example.
Right, but, so, you know, my, my thing on water for years has been fixed plus variable. I've always thought we should do that. Can we do that with this? It's, in other words, our fixed is MS4, and we put that in the bylaw. Our variable is project work, which every year must be approved that gets tied into it. So, every year, and as Marie said, we, we approve projects now that are capital, but instead of it being paid for, generally, it says, "Well, borrow it or pay for it out of available, you know, funds from the Treasury," or whatever it is, we can just say, "Paid for out of the stormwater utility," which is what we do now. But it, there's a level of, of review. So, we've got this small fixed rate that is, if you will, the unfunded mandate requirement. But then, any of this project work then lets people say, "Okay, I know what I'm getting into, and I'm going to control the rate above that."
Again, I think putting the rate-setting authority other than kind of the upfront bylaw method makes it difficult to plan for those projects and fund those projects. And the rate is set on the, the rate is fixed based on equivalent residential units, and then, you know, the fee that gets attached to each equivalent residential, the ERUs.
Right, but without, without a stormwater utility program, Stephen, any of our stormwater projects, major projects, would have to be funded through town meeting as appropriations. And all we're saying is fund it, but the first line will say, instead of pay from available cash or from funds in the Treasury, it'll be pay through the stormwater utility for the following project, whether it's borrow it or however it is we want to do that. And that just helps set the rate for the stormwater utility fee for the, for the upcoming year.
I don't see how you do that.
You see, I, I don't see-
We don't do the water rates that way.
But, but, but right now, we do all of our stormwater projects that way. We don't know what storm, you know, we didn't know we were going to do Merryweather Drive. We didn't know we were going to Avondale Road until we got funding at town meeting, or even, you know, Crestview Circle. Same thing. We won't know we're going to do it until we get funding at town, town meeting. And once we get funding, it just rolls into that rate instead of into your tax rate.
But the improvements to the water system are in the proposed rate structure that you give us each year. So, it's in there. It's like Prego, it's all in there. And the other one could be in there, too. I don't see how it could-
Yeah, you'd have to do, you'd have to build it into the, you're doing the rate-setting process in January, February. You would have to build in that capital component of it in your rate.
Presuming that they'd be approved.
Exactly, and if they're not, then there's a retained earnings component that you build a surplus that would then be available for some other project.
Right, but, but the rate only gets set based on what's been approved.
Approved by the Select Board.
No, approved by town meeting for projects.
You set the rate. You, you, you're going to set a rate based upon an operating budget and a capital budget. That capital budget could be denied at town meeting.
Can we set the rate in June, after town meeting?
The end of May, after town meeting.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Well, no, because you don't have the appropriation.
Well, you would have the appropriation amount. You would have the appropriations that town meeting set. And then you would have to set the rate accordingly. The problem is, you would really have to make sure that you are absolutely going to set a rate that is going to fund that, otherwise, you're going to have an unbalanced budget.
Yeah.
That's your job, Paul.
Okay, so we're going to, yeah, we're going to stop this conversation and get ready for the public forum that's going to begin in about one minute. If any of the department heads would get-
Should I? Do you need, I have paper copies of the presentation. Do you need me to project?
Yes, yes. We love the way you project. I know.
Do you want, do you want a motion to close our current meeting?
Yeah, um, yes, to reopen, and open, just to suspend.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to suspend the current meeting until after the, what is it, budget forum?
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Are you coming here?
Okay, and help yourself to something. Something to drink, and anyone else, we've got pizza and something to drink over there.
Is this part of it?
Oh, no, that's not it. It's stuck together.
There's no staple.
All except Tom. He got here late. And Bill is not there.
It's five pages. There's 15 copies.
Thank you. Yeah, we can fix it, but, you know, it doesn't make sense. First discussion, bring it back up in the next meeting, and the next meeting, until they realize.
You want that side?
Yeah, because the court thing.
Okay.
We voted down the ICA fund until we got the warrant confirmation, maybe all time. And so, and we voted on putting back in the reserves, so the $84,000 reserve fund, until Stephen comes back with everything else.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, and now, we've just been talking stormwater utility. And Bill said. And Stephen made announcements about how bad the storm's going to be in preparation to prepare everyone for tomorrow. So, now, we're just going to have any pin, we have selectmen pins. I don't think we have anyone from the, no, I don't think any residents are here, so it should be. We have a meeting.
Because anytime you get to reaching in that cookie jar.
But I won't be listening. Pizza shop, East Long Meadow. I went out of town. And you can pack the agenda with anything you need. Or make a short, easy meeting. There you go. Okay, one more minute? Now, Mark?
I hope this goes pretty cool. Throw him down the rest of the meeting. So, we got, we should have a-
Exactly.
But good service.
Oh, who's here?
Mary. Mary Williams.
Oh, there you go. You're right. And Richard.
No, he doesn't count. He's a finance guy.
We lost Stephen.
What are we waiting for?
Actually, it's actually-
That's all right.
Yeah, it's a nice looking pen.
Okay, Stephen, are you ready to begin? Okay, we're going to open the town public forum on the budget presentation. And Stephen and Paul will let you take over.
Thanks, Marie. So, I'm presenting the FY 2018 Town Manager's Budget. I hear this evening, behind me, as you can see, I have most, most of the department heads for the town. And if there's a more committed and professional group of department heads, I'm not aware of it. So, I want to commend them for their work and thank them for being here tonight to answer, to talk about what they do and answer any questions the board may have or the public may have about their budget. So, we'll start off with our famous pie charts. I did, I did reduce the amount of pie in the presentation. It's a low-calorie presentation this year. I don't know that we quite hit six slides, Mark, but we, we did our best to get close. This is basically the budgeted funds that town meeting will be voting on, sliced according to the budgetary divisions that are set by GAB, or G-A-A-B, G-A-B. So, the kind of catch-all categories are the industry standard for government. General Government, Public Safety, Planning and Community Development, Public Schools, Public Works, Community Services, Debt Service, and Employee Benefits. You know, it doesn't look very different year to year, and this is no different, I think, as we discussed when I presented the budget to you last week. We were able to balance the budget without use of reserves, and we're able to fully fund the Select Board policies and the school committees' request. And that, that's a good thing. The total this year is $64 million in 2,712. So, then, this is the spending categories, and this includes all funds. And really, the difference between the 64 and the 66 million, which is the all funds, is the school special revenue, which is not voted on by town meeting. It's, those are direct in, direct out, set by state statute. So, you can see, a large percentage, percentage of what we do, 56% is salaries. I say this every year, we're in the people business. The people are our raw materials, and they are our primary service that we provide. Expenses, and that includes a wide range of things, is the second-largest category, and then debt service and employee benefits. Going into the budget, we have these available fund balances. Free cash is about 587. Operational stabilization, it's getting close to 3 million, 2.9. Capital stabilization is about, almost 130. Water retained earnings is 592. Sewer retained earnings is 633. I know those two numbers seem high, but we've talked a lot about expected capital improvements that are coming from the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission that we know that will be using those funds to offset the rate impacts for- from the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, that we know that we'll be using those funds to offset the rate impacts for. Solid waste, recycling retained earnings, thirty, about thirty-one thousand, and then ambulance reserve is about thirty-three thousand. So this is a basic slide of sources versus uses. On the left column, you have the sources, that's property taxes, state aid and local receipts. I'm not gonna read you all the numbers and percentages, you can see them. You can, the big thing is, we did get two hundred thousand new growth, which is largely reflective of the shops' expansion coming online. State aid, we got, we are projecting an almost ten percent increase in state aid based on the governor's proposal. Obviously, that number isn't finalized until the state legislature acts.
It's not a ten percent increase, it's ten percent of the budget.
Ten percent of the budget, yeah.
It's only a two percent increase.
Right, two percent increase, yes. My trusted colleague, Paul Pizerzic, is correct, I meant to say, it's ten percent of the budget, nine point seven percent of the budget. Local receipts are about seven and three-quarters percent of the budget, and we're looking at about, almost a hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase in those, too. The big one is ambulance revenues that we are projecting based on some changes we're recommending to the staffing level in the fire department. So then, for uses, it's about a two point oh three percent increase in the general fund operating budget. Solid waste recycling, we're showing a over eight percent increase. Now, we are in the process of renegotiating our disposal contract, and I think, as everyone knows, we have a hauling contract and a disposal contract, they're two separate things with different vendors. And the disposal, basically the disposal, where we bring our trash, what we pay for that site to accept it, which is right now Covanta on Bondi's Island, is, you know, at sixty-three dollars a ton, we've gone out and got quotes for future disposal services, and those prices are coming in higher. We are still in negotiations and hoping to get as favorable numbers as we possibly can, but there have been shifts in the marketplace because of landfills closing in Massachusetts that have driven the price up markedly since the last time we did this. We've done the waters, the board has already voted as water and sewer commissions to set the water rates, so you've seen those numbers, and you did approve the capital plan as a warrant article, so you're familiar with those numbers as well. So this is just the department summaries. You can see, general government goes up a very modest amount, public safety is about three percent. Again, a lot of that is driven by the fire department changes we discussed, but that is also offset by the ambulance revenues we showed on the, on the previous slide. Planning and community development is down a slight percentage, no real change there, just minor changes in, in the payroll year, and how that affects the wages for the salaries for the year, it's a very small line item. Schools are going up about just over a percent and a half in the general funds, public works is down slightly. We talked about the ability of, or more favorable utility costs being a primary driver of that, as well as some insourcing, especially in the forestry division. Community services is going up three point four eight percent, we, there's some detail on that in a later slide. And then debt service is relatively unchanged, and then employee benefits, liability insurance is five point three six percent. And that was definitely a favorable increase for, that scanning value approved. I know five percent may not seem favorable, but it could have been a lot worse, so we were, we were happy to have a five, a five percent increase. The costs are obviously, health insurance are, continue to go up every year. So I just, I, I pulled out, I decided not to go through, one of the ways I was able to shed slides was by not doing each department individually, so I just called out the three departments that are, that show on the previous slide the greatest amount of movement. The first is public safety. Police department is basically level service, the fire department is up, we're recommending an increase of about a hundred and fifty thousand, that's, that's three percent. Again, that's offset by the ambulance, some of that is offset by the ambulance revenues. We're looking to create, not add a position, but elevate a captain position to a deputy chief. We also are looking to add two firefighters and EMTs, and we're gonna stagger these changes, so they are, at the end of the year, revenue-neutral, and we also need to purchase new IV pumps for the, for the ambulances, right? Yeah, for the ambulances. The Chief Dearborn is here and is prepared to answer questions about his vision for the department and what we hope to get out of these changes. So, school department, again, that's a one and a half percent increase, about five hundred and sixteen thousand. As I discussed when I presented the budget, it really reflects what we had, we had pushed for, which is a revenue-sharing or cost allocation setup. That would be, if you took their percentage of the budget and applied it to the new revenue this year, it comes out to just about that amount, and that, and we think that if we were able to continue that each year, eventually you can build it into the budget where the whole budget is reflective of a, of a revenue-sharing formula. They did have significant cost increases because of, they set up some collective bargaining agreements in the past fiscal year, but they also had some reductions in special education tuitions and transportation. They did reduce middle school staffing, that's something that they talked about last year, but it didn't happen in the final analysis, and so they are, they are advancing that initiative this year. And they do, they are adding a couple of positions at each, or a position at each middle school, adjustment counselors, and all of that helps them absorb a loss of about two hundred and forty thousand in school special revenues, so, again, I think it was the school department budget was something that the superintendent presented, and he's not here tonight, but he, he'd already, they'd already had their public forum. So, community services, there's a, it's a fifty-five thousand dollar increase, which is almost three and a half percent. Nevertheless, it is a level-service budget, the primary driver of that is almost thirty thousand dollars of needed benefits for veterans in our community, and that is really a result of expanded outreach and case management by the Director of Veterans Services. And Jesus is here tonight, if you have any questions about that as well. We do get a reimbursement by the state, but it trails, it lags so badly that you have to absorb the cost of the benefits in the fiscal year, and if you get lucky, maybe the revenue comes back in the fiscal year, but usually not. And then parks and rec daycare salaries are up ten thousand dollars, it's, you know, increasing, as I said last week, increased enrollment, and we also adjusted the wage offerings because of difficulty retaining and recruiting certain positions at, at the children's center. And those are reimbursed through the fees to, by, generated at the center, so that, those are also revenue-neutral. And then the regional library system fee increased by about fifty-seven hundred dollars, and Karen Kaplan, Library Director, is here and gonna talk about what drove that cost up and the benefits of being in the regional library system. That's it? How was that?
I hear any residents who have questions or comments? We have a microphone over there if they wanted to come. All right, we'll move on to the Select Board then. Do the Select Board have any questions or comments for either the Town Manager or CFO or the department heads?
Yeah, I have something real quick. The, the big pie sheet that you had up there when you had the salaries and all, especially for the schools, you showed the salaries, that did not include benefits, correct? The benefits are under, under a benefit?
The benefits of the green piece.
Right, so they're not, they're not directly showing, the benefits are separate from the school salaries?
Not just school salaries, that's the whole town.
Yeah, the whole town, that's what I need.
Right, but, right.
Right.
It is separate.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I noticed it was coming in about fifty-three percent, I think before we figured the total budget for the schools looked like it was about seventy-five percent?
When it's all-inclusive.
When it's all-inclusive.
Most of that debt is school-related also.
Right, okay. Mark?
Anyone wanna ask any other questions?
Sure, I, I had submitted a few questions, and I don't know, Paul, if you've had even a chance to even look at them, 'cause I know you were busy today, but if I could just go through with them, and I guess one of the concerns I have is, and overall, was just the review of FTEs. Stephen, I, I know we put together FTEs later in the year for GFOA, do we have FTE numbers yet, and what does that show?
I do. Erica sent this one.
And you wanna explain, FTEs are full-time benefited positions or just ours?
No, it's full-time, just full-time equivalent people.
Again, I, I didn't have a chance to see the email, Mark, with FTEs, you're going to have, there was one additional in the DPW. There was an engineering position that was, it used to be a seasonal position, that was created as a full-time permanent position. There are some shifts between, in the DPW, between general fund and sewer, but overall, there is a one FTE increase there. The other place that there is a, an FTE increase is obviously in the fire department, as Stephen had outlined. When you do the math and do the prorating of when they come in, it's basically one additional full-time equivalent there. By the time we come to FY nineteen, it'll be two. I don't believe that there's any other FTE.
What about the cook at the senior center?
What's that?
Wasn't that a new position? Full-time benefited?
It is a new benefited position, yes.
Yeah, but fully grant.
Yeah, but grant-funded.
No, it's grant-funded. And daycare, there was no, daycare didn't have a new FT? Okay, so we're down two. Oh. So, you're saying two to three?
Yes, I, again, I wasn't aware of the, the one in the daycare, but it makes sense with the increased enrollment.
Marie, you got something? I wonder if we could have the Chief of Fire Department explain his proposal?
Do you have a specific?
No, just, not so much for me, John, it's for everybody listening in TV land also.
Through the chair, if I just give a quick note about the storm tomorrow?
Yes.
Myself, the other department heads met this morning for a planning meeting. This is gonna be a severe storm, we're gonna have high winds, humid, snowfall rates, so we're really asking our residents to stay off the roads tomorrow. Any preparation should be done tonight prior to the storm, as we anticipate all the stores will be closed. We put a bunch of information up on the website, www-longmeadow.org, and also, if you haven't registered for your emergency notifications, there's a link to register for emergency notifications on here, just click on the link, go ahead and put your phone numbers on. DPW is gonna be the all-star at this event, their leadership there is well-prepared, they're rock stars, they've done a great job this year, they have an excellent plan for tomorrow, so myself and Chief Stanquett will be supporting them, and if we do end up with a tree or wind damage or power outages, we'll assess that as we go along. Right now, our UOC will be established, it won't be manned, we're in communication with BIMA and AGWAM, so if we need additional resources or, or anything like that, we can certainly reach out. Stephen and I just participated in the statewide call, so we have all the up-to-date information, so.
I did present that earlier.
Okay, so, so I just said what he said, so.
But you said it so much better.
It sounded so much better when you said it.
So, thank you for the opportunity to do this. So, in discussing my proposal, this is a pretty complicated proposal, it's really a two-year proposal. The fire department in nineteen eighty-two established its current management structure. That year, we did three hundred and sixty-two calls, as opposed to twenty-five hundred this year. We didn't provide EMS services, we still operated under the old civil defense model for emergency management. We didn't generate over a half million dollars year revenue, and we didn't provide humid, community safety programs, and we only did a few inspections, included just a few school fire drills every year. In two thousand and sixteen, we did twenty-four hundred and ninety-four calls, sixty-seven percent were EMS. We did over fifteen hundred fire prevention activities, that includes inspections, fire drills, inspections of our healthcare facilities, liquor licenses, so obviously our roles in the community have greatly increased. There's three portions to this, and it's staggered throughout the next fiscal year. One of the bigger changes is to elevate a captain from, to a deputy chief. From a cost perspective, it's cost-neutral, if you take the, the cost of captain's salary plus what a captain makes in overtime, really the same cost. So one of the benefits of that, so why don't we just maintain the captain? Well, currently, I'm the only non-union person in the fire department, there's no defendant or second-in-command. So, that's an issue for me, when I go away, I have to appoint a, a union member as, as the acting chief. Now, I have a great relationship, I have a great crew, and typically, that's not an issue. When I looked around the area to, in comparison to other departments, I was the only department in the area that didn't have this position. When I spoke to other chiefs, they, they really said, you know, that's kind of unusual in this day and age because of your responsibilities. As the department has the fire chief, I really run three divisions. I run the fire department, I'm the emergency medical director, and I'm also the emergency manager. So as you can imagine, on a day like I had today, I'm pretty busy and I'm pretty stretched. I really don't have someone to delegate some of these responsibilities to. Today, I have a captain working, but he's putting fires out, he's running out to every emergency, so all of the things that we had to do today, I really had to do on my own. So, to give me the ability to delegate some of that authority, some of that responsibility, would be a big help. The deputy chief also would have several responsibilities, we have a lot of support functions within our department, there's hundreds of support functions, running ambulance is incredibly complicated, we have about five million dollars in equipment in the department that requires maintenance, all that funnels through me, from my captains through the different departments, so I'm in the data with information. The deputy chief would actually be the operations officer for the fire department, he would oversee a lot of those support functions to really ensure they, they get done. A lot of these support functions are currently done on a part-time basis, so when a captain comes in, he's, he's, he's running the ambulance crews, the fire suppression, rescue, and he's also, has a secondary duty. I'm not gonna eliminate those secondary duties, but the deputy oversee those duties and fill in and make sure we execute those efficiently and accurately, we're not waiting weeks for something to get addressed. The deputy will also oversee our inspection and fire prevention program, one of the FTEs that we talked about will actually be assigned as a fifty percent EMS coordinator, fifty percent fire prevention officer, so we're actually gonna spread those duties out. We're at maximum capacity with inspections now, we're currently not doing all these inspections, we're only doing the inspections that we're mandated to do right now, that's healthcare, liquor licenses, and school inspections. There are a lot more inspections we should and could be doing. In two thousand and nineteen, I'm gonna come prior to two thousand and nineteen, my plan is to launch a comprehensive inspectional program for the community. Currently, we generate about fifteen thousand dollars a year in inspectional fees, our current estimate is that we'll minimally double that, so we'll come back to you with that plan. There are some new regulations that are going to affect, that'll actually enable those, I'll be asking the board to adopt NFPA one, part of the building code, which will enable us to do, do some of that stuff. The deputy also has some responsibilities under emergency management. Emergency management is a tidal wave of growing responsibility, every year, there's more and more to it. One of the first responsibilities he'll have is to oversee the town's radio system. Currently, on emergency management, we, we basically take care of our radio system, our radio system is about fifty percent in age, it's got about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar value, currently, we have over two hundred radios in town, plus a pretty robust infrastructure. Those radios include fire police, DPW, schools, and emergency management. Managing that radio program, I tell you, of anything I could give up, I would give that up tomorrow, so. And I should, the chief would echo that. It's a lot, it's a ton of work. It's just a lot of moving parts. The second will be coordination of our shelter capability. We have a good core shelter capability, but shelter capability is really based on the people that can run your shelter. And Beverly does a great job with her MRC volunteers, but shelter capability requires a lot of maintenance. We have to make sure we have the proper equipment, we have to make sure we have MOUs in place. Currently, we have a MOU with J and H for our disabled folks, but we actually should have quite a few, quite a few more MOUs to run more frequent shelter drills, to make sure that's a robust capability. Shelter, when the stuff hits the fan, for you have, to have a place where residents can go, be secure and safe, is really the ultimate emergency management responsibility, then obviously, then the recovery of the community, get them back home, so. The last emergency management responsibility for the deputy, the formation of a local emergency planning committee. A local emergency planning committee is, it kinda comes out of the hazardous material days and the tier-two days, I know, Mark, you're familiar with that, that stuff, but it really, it's morphed, and we're actually one of the only communities in the Pioneer Valley, and we're only a handful in the state that don't have this local emergency... Valley, and we have only a handful in the state that don't have this local emergency planning committee. It's a public-private group of folks, so my vision for the community will be our church organizations, your Bay Pass, your J&amp;Hs, your large community housings, to actually have those folks be part of our town's emergency management plan. Some of that decentralized government responsibility in an emergency. So if this week, we needed a warming shelter, I could reach out to a church. Now, we could do that now, but the church isn't trained, hasn't planned to do that. It's really a function that they've, they've never done before. On a local emergency planning committee, you stand those resources up. So take some of, by formalizing these, this committee, you take some of the responsibility off of us as a town. The other nice thing about a local emergency planning committee is opens up for grant money. Anyone from $3,000 to $10,000 a year, depending on what's funded. So, that's, that's a funding pool we're not eligible for right now. And I'd love to have that money to run things like shelter drills, train up our church people, assert teams, things like that. So, that's what I'm looking for out of the deputy chief's proposal. It's really to modernize our department, meet the growing needs of our department, and actually build some redundancy into the department. Just one quick thing, when I took over as chief, I served as a captain for, as a captain for the fire department for 21 years. When Steve offered me the job, I thought I was, had a pretty good handle on the department operations. I will be quite honest with you, it took me about six months to get up to speed on the administration of the department, particularly the ambulance end of it. The level of regulations, the billing aspects of it, which we fixed last year, that's a big part of it. And that's one thing, one of my goals as a deputy chief, is I don't want to leave the department in a bad place. If I hit the powerball, which I, which I first should start to play, I can tell you that the administration of the department would suffer. Because there's such a gap between my role as the administrator of the department and the operational, we really need someone in the middle. So, to meet the needs of modern-day fire department, that's why I've leveled this proposal, Richard, so I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, thoroughly.
Yeah, the, you know, the way things are for billing for ambulance services, that's really a big plus, and so it's a great contribution you've made for the town, to the fire department. Now, usually, we see something about fire truck replacement in the budget, and I don't know if I.
Using capital. Using capital.
Using capital? All right. But are we getting a new fire truck?
We are. So our, our fire truck is on order. I'll give you a quick, a very quick update on that. Building a fire truck or ordering a fire truck is pretty complicated. It's not like going to the Chevy dealer and getting one of those. We actually just completed the file engineering, and I signed off on that last, last week or the week before. So we have the actual blueprints, just like building a house, the blueprints, I signed off on them. We have one minor engineering issue we're still working through. It's actually a generator for the vehicle. We're trying to size it correctly for, for, and I, I'll just give you a quick comment. Building a fire truck for the town of Long Meadow is a lot different than building a fire truck anywhere else, because we keep them for 20, 25 years. So I'm having to really look at that crystal ball and see where technology's going to be in 20 years, and try to build a truck that's going to service you then. So, it's been, it's been a great ride. I've actually had eight community members from my fire department volunteer their time, and they've engineered a great truck for us, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for the chief?
Yeah, I have a couple, just in general. One is the, the EMT expansion proposal. I think that's also part.
It is.
Part in this budget. But before you get to that, I, I don't know if this is for you, chief, or for Paul Pasterzic, but there was a line item in here, and somebody had referred to it, for new IV pumps. And I'm wondering, why is that a, you know, a budget line item, given the extended it is, and if it's a, if it's a one-time?
I believe it's a one, one. It is, yeah, it is a one-time. I could just comment on why we have it, Mark, or. So, I've been kicking and screaming not to do that, to introduce IV pumps. It's a mandate. It's a change in our protocols. Myself and the rest of the fire chiefs in the region are, are opposing it. It's a piece of equipment that is fairly expensive to purchase. It'll require, also require service agreements to be calibrated and things like that, which is in my budget already. So, we don't really want to do this, but if the regulation passes, we're going to be forced to do it. So it's a one-time purchase. I believe when we talked about it in Paul's police comments, it didn't meet the requirements or capital.
It's not, it's not quite capital.
Yeah, and that's kind of a process for spending the EMS money, so wasn't sure else how to.
But is this ambulance fund money that's going to, additional ambulance fund money going to come in and go out?
The ambulance revenue went up $90,000 from 455 to, I'm sorry, from 555 to 645. So yes, you can consider it being covered by the ambulance.
Well, I guess, Paul, the question is, when we bring in ambulance fund money, my understanding was it goes to places. Some of it goes to actually run the ambulance. That means pay some of the EMTs and some of the equipment, and some goes into this fund to buy the next ambulance. Is that correct?
It basically all goes.
I mean, it goes.
It basically all goes in, into the fund, the ambulance fund.
But some of that gets transferred.
But it, some of it gets transferred over to fund the operations of, of the fire department, which provides the ambulance service.
But I, I would, maybe I wasn't looking in the right place, but I was trying to find the increase in that amount transferred into the, into the operating budget, and, and when I looked at the, the revenue.
Yeah, if you look at, there's a three-page report, Mark.
Yeah, I got that.
And if you look on the second page, on line number 54, you're going to see a $90,000 increase in ambulance.
Okay.
Revenues.
All right. Thank you. So chief, if you could just give us a, just a quick, quick rundown on why you're asking for additional, you know, staff.
Sure. Now, I'll, I'll try to summarize the best I can. So, roughly, we've seen a 53% increase in run volume since our last staffing increase. Our last staffing increase was completed in 2000. We've experienced about a 3% growth rate per year. So as runs go up, you hit a tipping point. And, so, you funded my overtime budget for the past many years with my predecessor, and we've consumed it. And we can, considered, because of the run volume with the staffing levels we currently have, we can continue to consume that overtime. The other part of it, too, is operating the second ambulance. When I came in, and I, and I think we discussed with the board, was the operation of the second ambulance was something that we really needed to take a look at. If you look at the EMS industry as a whole right now, anywhere in the country, there's more patients than ambulances. So, with operating one ambulance with our current run volume, we rely on mutual aid. So, two things result in mutual aid. Delayed in the response to the scene. Now, we always send, whether it be someone in a car, a fire truck, even myself, sometimes I've gone out to calls, we'll always put a trained person on scene, but we don't put that ambulance on scene. Now, the ambulances have advanced equipment, and so, even though I'm a paramedic, if I go out in my, my car, I don't have the equipment to, to do anything. So, with the delays in getting the second ambulances, it's, it's a care issue. It's really providing the best care to our, our patients and our, and our residents. The goal, our goal is to get the ambulance on scene quick and get them to the hospital, so we give them the highest level of pre-hospital care in town. We're operating, we're, our residents are getting the best, but to get them to the hospital quicker. Now you put 10 minutes delay to get a, a truck from AGWAM or someone in Springfield. Mark, I'm going to tell you, there was two occasions this year where the second ambulance saved lives. Our primary ambulance was out, we deployed the second ambulance out, and it actually had a positive outcome. The people required definitive care. If there was a 10-minute delay, the outcome would have been different. So we ran a pilot program this year. We did 169 transports with the second ambulance. The resulting revenue was about $110,000. The additional fuel and supplies is $5,700. It did cost us because of our staffing level, about $36,000 in overtime to do that, but we still had a surplus revenue of $68,000. So, with additional staffing levels, we'll actually eliminate that overtime component to that. We also believe that we can about double that revenue every year, and that's what the projections that Mr. Pasterzic had, had given to you. So, we know that we actually utilize mutual aid, or there's about another 123 transports by mutual aid, and we'll significantly reduce that. We will never eliminate mutual aid altogether. There are times we get two, three, four, even five calls at a time, but we need to do better at it. And I think, I mean, really, we're going to transfer some costs around, but there's, there's enough revenue out there to support this. And I've spent, and Paul's been awesome at working through this with me to make sure that we're still sustainable, because part of this, too, is, I can spend the operational money, but I also got to fund the ambulances and all this really expensive equipment every year. And I'm pretty comfortable with this budget proposal that will continue in that direction.
If I could just follow up, Marie, for a second. Just, so, the question I had had when you weren't here a couple of weeks ago was, but two people, it's not, you know, like, one per shift or two.
Yeah, so.
So how, you know, how does two divide into 24?
Yeah, so, great question. So, I have it here somewhere. So, we, we collect data like you wouldn't believe. So I know where I can impact this the most. I'm sorry, I actually have really cool grammar.
You mean like on Sunday at 3:00 to 7:00 PM or something like that?
Yeah, so I know, so if I take the seven days a week, I know between 7:00 in the morning and, and 5:00 at night, there's a, that's where the majority of my calls go. It actually narrows down towards midday, and the, and the percentages go up higher. So if I want to actually staff a position to actually make the biggest impact, I know that day position. If I have, if I have increased staffing during the day, I get virtually, with this proposal, I will virtually eliminate daytime overtime and maximize use of the second ambulance, so. Again, our software is, I mean, if you know how to pull it out, I can, I can give you numbers on anything you want.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief?
Except the powerball numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And you reminded us about the emergency tomorrow, so if we have any questions, could we direct it to next, the DPW and the police chief, because it sounds like they're going to have a very early morning. So, yes?
Yeah, go ahead, Marie.
Yeah. I had first, I had, last one, you can tell it, Mark.
I just, I don't know if you want to go through this, starting at the top, or just read.
No, I was going to say.
My police questions are, there was a reduction in $9,000 in emergency dispatch, and, and I was just questioning that, and I don't know if.
I, I can get that very well. Yeah, I do have most of the answers. I have your document that we marked up in front of me, I haven't sent it yet, because we were waiting on a couple of.
Okay, I just don't know if anybody else has the same question.
No, well, you sent it to everybody. You.
Right, but they.
They don't have, nobody has the answers, the answers are.
Right, right, I'm just saying.
Why don't you say that the questions completely for the residents, too?
So, in the, in the, there was a line item, there is a line item FY17 for $9,000 for EMD stipend in the police department. As you know, the collective bargaining agreement expired at the end of FY16. And in the new agreement that was approved by the board, the stipend was eliminated. So, the stipend was carried, there's 20 patrol officers, they could, they could earn up to $450 each if they worked a certain number of hours doing EMD dispatch. We clarified the dispatch provisions and eliminated the stipend as part of the contract, so that's, that's already been set. And you also asked about the other expenses, and I would invite the chief up to talk more about his expense line, and there was an increase, I don't remember the, the increased amount of the expense line, but it did grow, so he can talk about his expenses. Yeah, there was an increase in two, of 2,000 from 3,200.
There was a $2,000 increase?
Yeah.
In, in our general expenses account?
I think it's other expenses, but yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, it's the same thing. Other expenses or general expenses? I guess, Mark, was the question, what is this account?
Well, I guess the question is, is there anything that's in that, that now goes into other that's gotten to the point where it's worth breaking out now? When, when other gets down to, gets to be a, a significant percentage of the overall, maybe it's time to take something in there and break it out. That was my purpose of asking the question. I mean, I don't, I don't need to know you're spending money on each little thing, but is there something in there that's, that's $5,000 or $8,000 or $12,000 that it's over some of the other line items that should probably have its own line item right here?
You know, right, right now, we have the reoccurring maintenance costs on our copy machine. We have two of those, and that, that equals out to about $3,000 a year. That's one of the things we're start, we start to see increases in periodically, and I'm anticipating the increase last, next year. That's why I increased that. Two line item that out, I don't know if that's.
That's probably, no, copying machines, not, not, but, I get it, okay. I was just looking at why there was a, you know, 15, 18% increase in that other line item budget.
One of the things, the, one of the increase, the things we're having to increase those is there are some costs associated with special programs. And I think it does a way to maybe, maybe have special programs as a line item, because then people can see what we're offering for the citizens' police academy and the RAD classes and stuff like that.
Yeah, and again, we, we have been trying to offer more programs for, for the community, and we're trying to do more community outreach and engage the community more. And so, we, it is something we can do, like Stephen said. We got the RAD program, we got citizen police academy next year, we're going to have the bike rodeo, we're trying, did the open house with the fire department this year. We'd like to augment our participation in that, enhance that a little bit, as well as other programs. We're also providing brochures and literature that isn't funded, the resources we have in our community and out there in Hampden County for those people who are, who are fan, or themselves or family members are suffering, suffering from opioid addiction, domestic violence, sexual assaults, things like that, who those are reached. So we're producing information and pamphlets, and we're distributing those to the community through our officers when they respond to calls for service. So, that's some of the minor costs that, over a period of time, does escalate and does cost, and it is incurred by the police department.
Thank you.
Chief, just while you're there, in the area of domestic violence, do we have a specific officer who addresses that and sort of keeps track of ongoing situations that may need attention or, you know, like if we have a victim who may need a police officer just to stop by once in a while and make sure that.
Like a sexual assault, if there's a report of a sexual assault, Tom?
Well, I was thinking domestic violence, but more than that, but.
We, we don't have an officer specifically who will do outreach. We have victim witness advocates, if it is referred to the court system. They're employed by the court system in order to do that outreach as well. Do we do follow-ups? Yes, our officers, of course, do follow-ups. In the event that someone is arrested, we're mandated to notify the victim when the defendant is released from custody. Offer additional support, offer additional resources, or contacts for additional resources.
All right, yeah. Because I know that for victims, it, it really makes a big difference sometimes to have an officer stop by and just check in on them, because they, you know, they're in a high-risk situation sometimes, and so.
And it's not so much that we do that, we do that with a majority of our calls, we do have our officers follow up, and it isn't just with domestic violence. That's one of the services, I think, that, that makes us a unique community, is our follow-up.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
I have one question. Chief, since you, since you implemented an ARCAM program, have any of your officers had the, the need to administer?
Over, over the course of a year, it's been implemented for just a little over a year. There, the, the good thing about this program was we do have it available. There was one time, we arrived before the fire department did, fire department, emergency personnel did, and we were able to administer it, and we were able to do so successfully. The good thing about this community, because it's the nine square miles in which we patrol and service, we also have a quick response from our paramedics. By the time we get to the scene, evaluate the situation, 99% of the time, they're on scene. So they're the ones who are going to administer the ARCAM. But it was at one time, not too long ago, where we were able to save that.
Okay, I had one other question, too. I, I keep seeing in Facebook and all, we've had some success stories with our K-9 unit?
K-9 unit is, is growing, not only in popularity, but we're starting to see, we're starting to utilize it more, because the dog is getting older, Kai is getting older. Officer Van Buskirk is doing an exceptional job training the animal. And with that being said, yes, we had some successes, not only catching perpetrators who were involved in a domestic assault, who fled from the police, we were able to chase them through some thickets, and, and able to engage the individual and place them in custody. Also, there was an incident where a house was broken into, a beating to a residence, and we were able to deploy the K-9 and was locate the perpetrator on the, on the third floor of the residence. And of course, there was another one that comes to mind, where there was a, a vehicle involved in a motor vehicle collision. The dog was able to track the individual and locate the injured party and summon the injured party and summoned the medical team to come in and assess. So I, we would have probably located him eventually, but we were able to do so in quick, quick time.
You haven't had that discussion with your dog, though?
He's in the unions.
Yeah, you're not kidding. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you very much. And any questions for DPW?
Yeah.
While he's getting there, Mark, you did ask a question about, for my budget, the select board town manager's budget.
Right.
About the assistant town manager position, all positions have to be posted 15 days under the charter, so we'll go ahead and do that and evaluate the candidates that submit. In terms of the reduction in the innovation funds, which is going to offset increases in that, in the select board town manager's budget, most pronounced, the biggest one was the 10,000 in legal services, then that, and that increases based on recent expenditure trends.
Okay, thank you for joining us. I know you're going to have a late night or an early morning, or both.
Late night tomorrow.
Any questions for our DPW?
Mine wasn't a question as, as much as maybe just let the public know. I noticed, since Andy's got here, that you've been making a lot of improvements on guardrails throughout our community, and there's an increased emphasis on some of the places where we needed guardrails. And I notice you're using a, a special type of guardrail. I don't, I don't think our general public is aware of what's going on. Could you just share with us real quick what, what's, what you're up to on the guardrail replacement program, and why we're seeing them show up in certain locations where they weren't before?
So our last guardrail, again, for the record, Andy Carr, town engineer. So our last guardrail bid, we used two types of guardrail, one of which we've used in town before, and you've seen that on Long Meadow Street. It's the steel-backed timber guardrail. So we used, for most of the sites, we used the timber guardrail, and the other one was a Core 10, they call it a Core 10 guardrail, same shape as a typical W-beam rail, but it has a rusted, a rusted look.
And that product is intended to rust, that actually seals the material as it rusts.
It's intended to rust, and the rust usually takes place over the course of two or three months. So if you were to drive out to, say, Mill Street, where we recently installed it, by this time, it's rusted. So we did it for a couple of reasons, mainly aesthetic reasons, but what the rust also does is, it, it puts on a protective barrier. If you drive down to the shore sites, Connecticut, Massachusetts, you'll see a lot of bridges. Now, most bridges, steel bridges, will be using Core 10 steel.
Right, and I know, see, because it sounds like I'm leading the thinking here, but the emphasis is, is a direct result of the select board increasing those allotted funds that you had available. And so I want the public to understand, you're starting to see the efforts are being put forth from DPW and having the money to do the work. The guardrail assemblies are showing up, and by the way, they're, that timber, timberback, steel, steel-backed timber guardrails are not the cheapest guardrails, but they're the most aesthetic-looking for, for our type of community. So, and I guess you've still got a long way to go on that program, but you've made a lot of progress in the short period of time that you've been here.
Yeah, in fact, we've, the bid last year came out lower than expected, so we currently have a second bid, with our available funds being about $47,000 left over from previous years, in fact. And this bid, which is actually due tomorrow, in all likelihood, will be postponed today, will be replacement of guardrail on Bark Hall Road, Emerson, and new guardrail, a short segment on Burney Road, just, just to the west of the Mayfair intersection.
Of course, there's another small detail I don't imagine many people notice, except Rich. You're not seeing potholes in town this year, folks, and when they are there, they're being filled pretty quick. And that is a direct response to, to requests made of DPW a couple of years ago, to get what they call a hot box asphalt machine, where they can actually do hot asphalt repairs instead of cold patch repairs. I'm not the strongest advocate in it, but it, I can be proven wrong, and I guess I was, it seems to work pretty good even in our climate range. I had off to you guys on patching the potholes, they, they look good, and they're a lot better than the cold patch, it ruts out immediately. I imagine this storm would have really raised havoc on your potholes if you hadn't filled a pot, or a cold patch.
I think the freeze thaw cycle has helped us too. We've had the ability to get out there and, and knock some of those down sooner than later, but certainly having the right equipment goes a long way.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Steve, I had submitted a few questions. The biggest one is, on highway, is rentals, is that the snowplows, the rentals?
So yes, this budget is, we asked for extra money, an extra 15,000.
Truck, sand plows, right, okay, yeah.
It's a second truck this year, but it's not just trucks, I think that was your question. We do sometimes rent other things. Last year, you probably remember seeing the hydrocater out, we've rented loaders in the past, backhoes and different equipment we needed to, you know, finish projects that we, we're going to do.
Yeah, I think for tomorrow, we rented an additional loader with a big giant snow bucket, and so that's an example of, like, tomorrow you'll see an extra loader out there that we're supplementing our fleet, just on a rental basis.
That's all for you on the roads?
No, unless we need to.
That's fine. The other thing is, I, undergrounds maintenance, there's a repair and maintenance buildings. I was trying to figure out what, why.
Pool houses, that's how we, we fixed a kiddie pool.
Okay, so it's, it's buildings that are related to your grounds?
Right.
Okay, I, I just couldn't, didn't understand what, what that was, okay. Let's see, whatever.
The GPS, it is split 50/50, it's 50/25/25.
25/25, okay.
And we do have a fair number of utility vehicles, like, like sport utility vehicles, no, water and sewer vehicles, as well as general fund vehicles.
Okay, and I guess in building maintenance, a couple of questions I had was, was, you know, some of the, the repair costs for building maintenance seemed flat, and I thought that was surprising.
So, last year, obviously it was my first year doing a budget, it, it seemed that we started charging each school and building as those expenses occurred, and then we'd backfill it with the three line items above it, and I can read them for you if you want to, give me a second to find them, and those, you know, that just was an offset. I think what we're trying to do now is predict what we're going to spend in each of those categories, and then budget appropriately. This is only year two, so, all I had was really one year of information to, so I left them as they are. Should we go over what I think we're going to need, we're going to go back to those, those three line items that I'll reach you in a second. Yeah, service agreements was one of them.
And supplies and repair renovation.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So, the, the other question I had had was, we, because supplies are, are up, your supply budget, line items, is, is way up, but the other one is the equipment replacement, was there something specific you had in there, or this was just because you found that you weren't having enough money in that line item?
Well, both, actually. I don't know if you remember, or even if you knew, but one of our schools had a floor buffer battery explode, so, replacement of old equipment is part of it. We had a vendor come in and do a presentation on the use of backpack vacuums, and how much more efficient they are, as opposed to the ones we own, so, we're starting to transition as, as we need new ones, those are the ones we're going to buy, so, some of it is replacing what we got, and some of it's replacing what's broken.
Mark, can I build on, can I build on Mark's point? Because that, that very question came up at the finance committee meeting last week about, you know, with all the talk about the condition of the schools, why the line item is relatively stable, and I want to clarify that, and I think Superintendent O'Shea was clear on this as well, when it comes to a maintenance and ongoing care of the, of the, of all the school buildings, of all town buildings, we have a good handle on what our needs are, and that's why we're able to have a good handle on what the budget should be. That's different than capital expenses. And the discussion about why haven't, why hasn't the town invested into capital expenses on, like, the middle schools is obviously the one that's the most popular topic of conversation in that regard right now. That's a question that has been going on for, that's a discussion that's been going on for years, and so I think sometimes, you know, when it came up to the finance committee, we had to, we had to compartmentalize and say, operations, maintenance, custodial care, you know, we, we understand what those needs are, we are on top of that year in, year out. New windows, roof, HVAC units, those are capital items, and those are the things that get, you know, reconsidered annually, because, you know, making a capital investment in a building that we may be seeking to replace may not be a good investment, and that's, and you, you've been a part of a hundred of those conversations, if you've been a part of one, so, it's a good point, and we, and we understand, and like I said, and it is a kind of a thing that we now, I've realized, kind of jumps off the spreadsheet, because like I said, it was made at the finance committee meeting, but I just want to clarify for you and for folks at home, it's just two different things. The building maintenance condition is, I think, is, our attention to building maintenance is actually very good.
Okay, my only response would be, the, the maintenance that, because it's deferred, becomes capital, for example, carpet replacements, you know, the, you know, and I don't even know if we need any carpets anywhere, but, but that's the kind of thing where I'm hoping that the, you know, maintenance department says, look, it's time to replace this carpet, it's not really capital yet, but it's really maintenance, we ought to go out, and I, because that was one thing that always frosted me, and we ended up having to pull out 15 carpets at a time, and that cost them $100,000, when in fact, we should have been replacing them one at a time.
Maintenance department has done exactly that.
Okay, that's.
Wolf Swamp School?
Yeah, we have started.
No, that's fine, I'm just saying that, that I, I, you know, again, where it says building maintenance, it doesn't say there's carpeting in here, but I, you would think that if every year we're replacing X number of square feet of carpeting, year over year, the carpeting goes up a couple of percent, maybe that line item would go up a couple of percent.
Or we do less at a school.
Yeah. To one of your other questions, though, you said what is AHARA? AHARA is, is.
Asbestos.
Air quality and asbestos removal. It's just, it's, HEPA is air quality. AHARA is asbestos removal. If you're, if the carpets are original, chances, you know, they're, they're glued down with an ACM, and asbestos containing material, so sometimes carpet jobs can get more expensive than what you'd experience at your home.
No, no, I, I understand that, I was just trying to get to the fact that, you know, we've always said, you know, and a roof is a roof, I get that, but, but sometimes, you know, we've got two rotten windows, let's replace two rotten windows, rather than wait for the whole building to rot out, all the windows to rot out, that we have to replace it, and we'll fix those right on, on maintenance. That was, that was my only point on, on those items. Thank you.
Well, the only thing is, on the spreadsheet that Paul had given us, at the bottom of it, it said school fees to DPW, $48,000, and then for fiscal year 18, it doesn't say anything about that, and I don't know exactly what that meant.
Is that the school parking lot?
Parking fee.
Pardon?
High school, go ahead, you want me to do it? Well, you'd probably do a better job, but as I understand it, the high school charges its students to park in the parking lot, they must get a permit.
Oh, okay.
And it's somewhere, and I think it's been years in the making that this account has got to that point. So, we tried to, whatever maintenance we put into the parking lot, clean the catch basins, mowing, things like that, we tried to charge, I think they took the 48,000 from that account and supplemented my budget for those activities.
That was part of last year's one-time.
There was a plug-in.
There was an agreement last year as part of the kindergarten thing.
So, so we get that money automatically?
No, we got it once.
It was truly one-time money. Those fun, those costs now have been put back into the general fund.
Okay, all right. So when the school budget came in, it, it was this 48,000 that was missing last year, how does that affect their overall percentage?
Last year was, last year was a bit of an anomaly because of the kindergarten tuition, it was an unusually large shift in the budget.
All right.
I, you said, the other thing is, they don't really have a place to spend that money, because, again, it's for the parking lot, and they don't have the maintenance to, to do anything out there, basically. So it's basically going to accumulate for a little while, and then revolving fund again.
Oh, okay.
And until, until we have some, some type of project, that will probably be handed over to the DPW, but it will be paid out of school funds, you know, at some point in time in the future.
Okay, great, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for?
Not for DPW.
Okay, thank you.
Before, before I leave, I do want to echo Rich's statements about the DPW and commend Mario, some other of his, of the division heads here, especially our, our snowmaster, is that we? Jeff McAlmond, the deputy director of the department, who does all the advanced planning for the snowstorms, and he's been sending out messages since Friday, I think, you know, notifying us that this was coming and planning, and so, I, I think we're as well prepared as we can be for this significant weather event, and just, you know, wish the guys luck.
Thank you.
I don't know if they need to stay, that's up to the town manager.
Yeah, they need to stay.
I'm going to send these guys home, if you don't mind. Water and sewer? Do you have any questions on those?
Questions for water and sewer? No? No, no? Thank you.
Sitting aside rate discussions, because it's not a part of the budget.
Yeah, I was going to mention that you have a total of five of your senior staff in here tonight from DPW, so there's people that didn't get on camera there, intricately involved in the organization also.
Steve, my question that I sent you about water and sewer hadn't, wasn't really an expense item, it was really an OPEB allocation request, and, just so people know, that we, you know, the percentage we had assigned by our policy would have been a total $380,000, which is what the general fund is for OPEB, but you also then allocated OPEB from water and sewer, which brings it up, and I'm just saying, should that not have been an offset?
Well, you, well.
My point is, should we be at 380?
According to your policy, no, because your policy specifically says 0.50% of the general fund property taxes. So this is, would be in addition to.
You got me on that detail, you're right.
Nice counterpoint.
You're right. I was just trying to save the town, town resident $6,059.
Any questions?
Out of 64 million dollars.
Any questions for other department heads that are here?
I got questions for the veterans' affair agent.
Jesus?
Jesus Prara, the director of veteran services.
Yeah.
It's the hot one.
Good evening.
Yeah, Jesus, I noticed that you, you've got a, something coming up on the warrant of a checkbox, that people can donate to a special fund for your veterans.
Yes, we do.
Could you explain what that is?
Sure, absolutely. We're requesting the town allow for a checkbox that be put on your tax bill or excise bill that would allow you to make a donation to an emergency veterans' fund, that would be used for emergency transportation, food, or oil heating. So we ask for everyone's support on that.
And that's exclusively just for those?
Absolutely.
It can't be used for any operational issues, or?
No, it cannot.
Any kitties, or pizza parties, or anything else? It's 1,000% for the veterans.
You're taking a hole, Richard.
Yeah, well, maybe a pizza party. I know, I, I don't want to put you, I don't want to put you too much outside of the realm, because I didn't preempt you to ask you this.
Sure.
I know you've increased, since you've been here, you've increased the outreach quite a bit by the veterans' department.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any stats on how many more people that you've reached out to? Now, I know the budget's been going up, and that's a direct indication that you're doing more outreach.
Well, what we have here is a consistent base, and when we're talking about veteran services in this town, and in my position, we're specifically talking about state veteran benefits, not federal or anything else. So, we're carrying about a 20-family caseload into town for just Chapter 115 benefits, which is up from about 12 or 13 when I came in, but what we have is, we've dug into the other options that are available to this program to help with family members with things like dental and hearing, and hearing aids and vision, so that's kind of increased the requirement of, of the, the budget.
And I know that you have a, a monthly meeting for veterans of our community and for some surrounding communities, that they can come in, and I guess you have, what, 30, 20 to 40 people show up for a monthly meeting?
Sure, we have the veteran circle once a month, it's the first Wednesday of every month, folks show up around 11:30, have a free meal, and then, you know, tell lies and war stories for a little bit, and maybe watch a film, but it's, it's a, it's a good outreach opportunity, it's time for service members to get together and, you know, meet your neighbors, you know.
And I know you've got some events set up that you're constantly trying to pull the vets into situations to recognize their service to our country. You've got a, I guess you're going to a museum in the next month or so?
We are, actually, it's the, I believe the 22nd of this month, we're going to be going to the World War II Museum down in Natick, it's going to be a quick day trip down there, but we're looking to also visit places like the Intrepid, or any other places that we feel that our service member will enjoy visiting.
Yeah, and this is total side. Yeah, and this is a total side note. It has nothing to do with the budget, but I also understand you are privately involved with, what, your airplane and delivering veterans to places?
Yes, sir. I have an initiative to make sure that veterans get to their healthcare appointments because it seems to be the primary reason why they're not getting help. A lot of it stems amount to health, alcohol, drug abuse. And just recently, we had a flight where we, we have volunteer pilots where we get together and we fly veterans from one facility to another. And you would ask why they would need this type of service and it's simply because sometimes the VA or some private healthcare provider will send you to a place like Long Island, New York for an appointment that may last 30 minutes. And you may not have the means. You may be homeless. You might be in programs like Soldier On or Ward Four and the VA Hospital. But it's, it's, the onus is on you to get there. So I started a nonprofit called VetAir to transport these veterans to and from these facilities.
Mark, you have a couple of questions about line items. I can answer the first one about the salary line item. Under the Valor Act, which is a state law that regulates the provision of veteran services, the hours of the veteran's agent should match the building in which he or she is stationed. And up until, you know, we expanded the hours of the adult center a few years back in a previous budget. And we did not commensurally up the hours of the veteran's agent. And we realized, and we realized that this year, so we had to, we made that change. Actually made it in FY17 because we really weren't in compliance. And then the COA.
The other thing that I would add too is, you know, prior years, prior to the Valor Act passing, your veteran service agent did administer state benefits. But now with the new mandate, we're actually required to assist with federal applications for benefits. Kind of do some local outreach and understanding what local programs are available for our veterans as well. So it kind of, the scope has kind of gotten a little bit wider here in what we're helping. And this time alone, I've probably done about 35 different aid and attendance applications and that's a federal program for, for veterans. And so you know your community, I'm serving on the chapter 115 side, mostly surviving spouses is, is, is who my, my primary, well, client is, I guess.
And I know the last time I went to the senior center where you're set up and there was some concerns about privacy and, and has there been any changes in the last few months, I guess?
Not any changes. It's definitely a concern and I guess we'll address them as, you know, as time goes on and we'll probably take an appropriate action in the near future to figure out what we're going to do.
But, but your biggest promise would be that if they, if we built a new senior center or something. Because do you have to work out time to get privacy for meeting with individuals? I mean, can you share? Because I know you're in a shared space and are you ever able to like commandeer that space for an hour or two?
Well, you kind of look around the corner and ask the nurse to step out for a minute, if possible. We, 90% of the time, we just keep our voices down and, you know, communicate in that manner. I'm not sure if the veteran or the family member feels comfortable asking to leave or not, and maybe I should take a stance and do something about that. But we've kind of worked with it as, as it is.
Yeah. Well, I know you're doing the best you can.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have questions for any other department heads that you want to call out?
Mark?
I don't even know that we need to call them up, but I just would go through the list, Stephen, if you don't mind.
I was about to jump in. COA?
Yeah.
And we were budgeting for a high, for a line item, the salary line item, we elevated a little bit. We just lost, we've lost two consecutive directors, two better paying jobs. And we want to give ourselves the flexibility to be competitive in, in trying to attract a highly qualified next director. You know, I, obviously, we're going to try and get the, the best director for the most cost-effective price we can. But we wanted to give ourselves some flexibility because it's clearly an issue with the position, the financial side of it. And then the increase in supplies, I think we've talked a lot about the relationship with the Friends Group and the funding of certain activities. We're trying to, we've been on kind of a multi-year process to kind of clarify those roles and responsibilities. And this is a part, this helps build us toward, helps get us closer to that goal of, you know, having clearly defined expenditure roles and responsibilities. So that, that's the driver of the increase in the supplies line item.
Any other questions on the COA?
Mike is here, but I will tell you that he was, Amy prepared the budget before she left, so that's why I'm taking the lead on those. Mike Squindo, the interim director. I guess I should have been a little more specific. Mark, you had the question about the stores library and the CW Mars. I would invite Karen and I see Mary Roganis from the board is also here if they wanted to, if you wanted to make a comment.
Just, I don't know if they saw the question, but the question was about the CWR, CW Mars charges, whether they were actual or estimated and whether it's based on an assessment or based on just a formula, I guess.
Yes, it has, it has-
I know we haven't paid it in many years.
What's that?
Haven't we been behind in our payments for some years or not fully paid?
Well, that's a different, that's a different thing altogether. But the CW Mars assessment has been made based on a formula that they use. Basically, they, they count your item counts within the library. They charge so much for that. They charge so much for circulations, for patron records, for eBooks, circulation, all of that. And then they come up with a figure for each library based, also based on your population.
So, but that's our assessment for the coming year.
Yes, it is.
So they've given you an assessment as opposed to this is our estimate of what it's likely, okay. That's my question.
Yeah, Mary would like, Mary Roganis is the board president this year.
Yeah. Mark, I just want to let everyone, all those people watching at home, know what CW Mars is. It's a lot of management tools for the library's information. But in addition to that, it's the entire interlibrary loan system, which is a very active part of the services we give to the town. Unfortunately, it has gone up from $20,000 to $30,000 a year.
And I think it was noted earlier that the line item has been inadequate. And so the, the board or the Friends, one of the two, has been supplementing that cost, right? The board, the library board has been supplementing our contribution. So when you said it was short, it was short, but we were still, we were still paying what we were supposed to pay CW Mars, but our, our cost was supplemented by the board.
The other question I had about the library is what Karen knew that nobody else did about her, her phone or water and sewer lines going up and nobody else's work. I, I just thought it was strange that that was the only department whose water, sewer and-
She had the crystal ball going on. She knew what you were gonna do.
Again, it's, it's, it's a hundred dollars. It's hundreds of dollars out of a $60 million budget, but it was just-
I think it's more based upon the, the usage as opposed to the actual rate increase.
I wanted to say, every year, you increase the programs. It's amazing, the outreach and the things that you do and your budget isn't shooting up, so thank you for-
Programming, we don't have a budget for programming at all. That all comes from donations, gifts, grants, the library board, again, friends. So we have a lot of great support organizations and we have a fabulous staff. So they're able to turn just a little bit into a lot. So people seem to really like the programs. That's what we're focusing on. We had over 700 programs last year. So our community room is used. We have one meeting room space, so it's used multiple times a day.
I'd just like to comment that the best thing that you folks did was put at least me, I think everybody on the select boards on your newsletter distribution list and it really lets us know. I got to tell you, I don't read it cover to cover every day.
There's so much.
Because it comes out so much, but just a word to the other department, that's the best thing you could have done in keeping the select board informed of what you did. I thought it was a, it was a great change when that was done a couple of years ago.
Thank you very much. Any questions for any other department heads?
So just, I'm just picking off Mark's thing as we go, while we're kind of in transition. HR department, a lot of, there was a 20% increase in supplies. That is really related to two primary factors. One is the Affordable Care Act. Has a lot more reporting requirements and a lot more mailings that have to go out. And it's usually a form and an envelope and, you know, in the out, in the mailing envelope. And as we also now do two open enrollments. And so retirees gets mailed two packages and, you know, this is still all done by paper. And a lot of the ACA forms are, you know, paper driven, so there's, it's been a large increase in our tree killing in the HR department because of ACA and the, and the two open enrollments.
Yeah, I haven't, didn't see in most of the departments, I didn't see postage increasing yet. I know, I, I made a note somewhere in one of these that, that postage went up 2% for the rest of us and, and yet we didn't show any increase, so.
You probably didn't see it go down last year when the prices went down either.
You're right, Paul. We did. Thank you.
You had a question about the assessor?
Yeah.
Basically, last year, we were, due to turnover, we hired an, a temp just to provide some clerical and administrative support. And that was funded out of the other expenses line item. Because it wasn't truly a salary line item, right?
Right. Transfer from the salary.
Right. And so now we have hired someone. And so now that cost is borne by the salary line item, a part-time person.
No, that's the full-time.
That's, that is Jessica. I want to say Vicky, Jessica in our, in our department.
So that reduction in the, in the other expenses, it was the offset to that?
Right, right. Again, we made a transfer from the salary to the expense for this fiscal year and so it's kind of, kind of deflated the FY17 number.
Any other questions regarding the budget or Mark's list?
Is it COAs and steps or?
COAs and steps for treasurer collector, the actual treasurer collector.
No, for the staff clerical, right? You're talking about the 5.53 increase in salaries for treasurer, for the clerical?
Right.
Yeah, I, there's, there's, there's no change in any hours here, so I'm going to have to assume again with a 2% increase in the step increases that are allowed when they move across their, their line item. There's, there's two individuals. There's a part-time individual and a full-time individual in that line item. But both probably have not reached their maximum grade or maximum amount of their grade.
All right, thank you.
I think we're just about through your list, Mark.
Yeah, we are. The, the one question up at the top though, that I, I ask every year and, and that is, is, is the split of, I guess, FTEs within the DPW? Paul, you did that, I think, last year, the year before, where we took, you know, the main administration, you've split them into grounds, streets, I think.
Yeah, we, we started the process three years ago. We did, we did some, some time studies with Mike Rabels here.
Right.
We found that there was a big transition at that time out of, mainly out of the sewer, out of the Subaru sewer labor into the general fund. We transitioned that over a three-year period. FY17 would have been the last year of that transition. Within the FY18 recommended budget, there is a little transfer back because of the collective bargaining agreement to run that sewer jet. So there's a somewhat of a transfer back, a little bit out of the general fund, back to the sewer fund. But I don't think there's any other major changes with any allocations other than that.
There, I have questions just for you two. Was there anyone have questions for the department heads so we could let them go? It's been almost an hour and a half. Anything else for the department heads? And I know residents aren't here, so. Thank you very much for coming.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, any questions for Stephen? I've got a few. Does anyone else have something?
Is this the speed round?
This is the speed round. And some of it just came up now that you were talking. That's it. You can stop me whenever. The IT needs, we were talking about the IT needs for the school and how we were talking about setting up that fund. And we didn't really talk about the IT needs for the town. Are we due for devices? They're just going into another four-year lease.
Right. I think as I reported, we talked about this last week.
Yeah.
The $185,000 replacement needs for the town are tied up in this whole thing. We're looking at it as a holistic.
You are. Okay. That's all I wanted to make sure.
She had questions. Can we shut down the public forum? Go back to select board meeting or is she going to say public forum?
We could shut it down and then just go back to the, do you want to have a motion?
Just raise these questions up briefly.
Yeah, okay.
Because there's nobody here.
All right, we have a motion to close and we'll go into the next, our session and then I'll, we'll continue budget talks.
We're going to just talk about budget in the select board meeting?
Yeah, we could, no, we just have the warrants. We're going to finish up the warrants, yeah.
How many budget questions do you have?
I only have like three. Okay. The other thing is that you, we talked about you were going to get an assistant town manager and you're going to post for it and everything. And the one thing you mentioned you were going to have is better communication with the select board. Were there other items that you were going to advertise for, what you were looking for that assistant town manager to do?
Yeah, I, I think, and this is something, you know, we've talked a lot about and I, I just, you know, to some extent, the, the role is going to be shaped around the person because we're not hiring someone off the street. So we need a fully advanced job, I guess, I don't view it this way. A fully advanced job description. I fully anticipate the person to come from the department head ranks. And so what they do now is going to inform what they're going to do to assist me. And a lot of it is really just, I just need, the primary need, and it's hard to, it's hard to quantify this or articulate this in job description, is a backstop. To make sure that the work continues as we go through this, if town meeting goes the way we hope it'll go, these, these major projects and my attention can be done either on major projects or focusing on some of our operational transitions that we're looking for. And then make sure that the day-to-day things, responding to select board requests, responding to constituent requests, making sure reports are done on time, keeping track of deadlines, maybe some, you know, keeping track of what grants are out there, I mean, those types of things. But there's just, you know, and it's not a lot, it, it's going to be extra work for somebody, so I don't want it to be conveyed. It's just, it's just a financial contribution to someone. It really, there is going to be a lot of extra work for someone who already is very busy. But just like I said, I think it's going to be, we haven't had an assistant town manager. So I'm hoping the board will trust me a little bit to give me a chance to feel it out. And if I don't feel like it's worthwhile, then we'll stop it.
So what you're saying is depending on the person, that person will either back you up in the operations or they're going to back you up in the planning and development side of it?
Well, I mean, not, I wouldn't limit it to just those things. I mean, as you all know, and you see, you know, there's, I mean, hundreds of things that go on at any given moment. And some things I have found I have not been able to follow through on at a time in man, or the IT agreement is a perfect example. If a year ago, I had an assistant town manager, I would have said, hey, get with whoever you need to get with and get that IT agreement, get, get a drafted IT agreement going. So specific project-based things, generalized support to the, to the select board, you know, attending meetings, making sure like right now, Debbie's helping me kind of come up with lists of tasks to come out of the meetings. I would look at this person as someone to help do that and make sure that, you know, on Tuesday morning, I'm clear on what we need to do and delegate, delegate some more high-level tasks that are hard, are hard to delegate right now. And then because it is a person who's already a department head, they'll have some, they'll be continuing with that role. But they'll also have additional authority to make decisions and manage staff. And maybe take on some of the personnel stuff too.
All right, so if you're, if they're taking over, let's say, the IT, you would let us know that, that the point person on that is the second town manager?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a better idea or feeling of what the expectations are going to be. Because it's a small line item, but it, it is a big change in the operational structure on where you're going to go with it. But I guess it's to be determined depending on the person.
Yeah, and it's, I'll be, like I said, it's a trial. Unfortunately, like I said, it'd almost be simpler and cleaner to create a whole new position. But when you talk about, when you look at wages and benefits, it's probably easily $100,000 addition to the budget to be able to fund a full, you know, new assistant town manager position. This, I thought, was a way to kind of bridge that gap and, and see what the role could be and, you know. I have specific things I think I'm going to want this person to do. But that doesn't translate into a narrowly defined set of roles and responsibilities. But I will, I, if it does get approved, we will definitely do that as I, you know, if we make an appointment, I would assume, I would assume that it would fall under the department category and I'd bring the, the, the appointment to the, to the select board for confirmation. And then at that point, I'll know better what the roles and responsibilities can be.
Richard?
Well, I was just going to comment that, you know, I, I had an opportunity last Thursday to sit in on a meeting that Stephen was at. And it had to do with a whole consortium of people who are, they're talking about the trash haulers contract. And that's a pretty big deal because if we could get, you know, it's going to go up quite a bit, you know, quite a bit for the town. And, you know, when I looked at who was at the table and I saw, you know, the town of Westfield- And, you know, when I looked at who was at the table and I saw, you know, the town of Westfield, or the city of Westfield, sorry, and the city of Holyoke, and was Springfield there too?
No, but Chickapee, a couple of smaller towns, Agawam was there, or Wilbraham, yeah.
Wilbraham, and I looked at, you know, our town, it really isn't that big of a player in terms of the amount of trash that we haul compared to places like Holyoke and Westfield. But I could see how Stephen's role in negotiating this contract, you know, I think is really key for our town. And to be in that leadership position is really important, and, but, you know, it would take away from duties, other duties. I mean, you only have so much time as a town manager, and so I could really understand how having a town, an assistant manager would help us in negotiating some of these deals that, you know, it's just like when we tried to negotiate with the casinos. You know, it's in addition to all the other things a town manager does, and so, you know, in that sense, you know, I see how it would be worth moving forward with something like this, even though it's new, you know.
Richard?
Yeah, I don't support an assistant. I support a deputy. You and I have had that discussion, and I recognize the need. The need is there. I think the need is there for a full-time person. I think our town's big enough. We can warrant it, the degree of planning that we're doing, the degree of stuff that we're starting with the people that we've got now. I would support an administrative code change in a second for a full-fledged deputy. But I don't like the idea of a stipend. I just, I just, I don't care for it because the need is beyond that. It's not a trial period. The workload's there. I think you know, Stephen, the workload's there. It's quite obvious. It's been there. It was there when Robin was here, and she immediately, that's the first thing she did when she took her new job, she put in a deputy. I think she knew it when she left here that it was just almost overwhelming, the amount of things. And to your credit, a lot of these things are, I think, run smoother now because you smoothed out a lot of the ripples in the water. We've had some staff changes, so there's a lot of things that have changed, but I still think we are on that threshold of understanding to move into, quote, the old 21st century. We need to staff up for it. And a person of your talent, being free of some of the duties that could be given to a deputy to work the agreements, can save that salary in a year by making good decisions. I mean, that's the easiest thing. I know people don't want to hear that on the outside, but for you to save $100,000, you can do that with a couple of good decisions for our community. Or maybe three or four. Depends on the side, but dig still. Your decisions bring in money to this community. If you're free and being able to expose yourself to that by shifting some, we've heard your division chief saying, you have the same problem, and I know you do. I worked with you for two years. You have the same problem that your chief has over here. You have operational issues that daily are going on that need better coordination or more coordination from your office. Not the fact you don't have fantastic people, but it's bringing it together because your division chiefs are not supposed to be out there knitting this together either because they have their spirit influence that's so important to keep nested into their divisions. So understand me, I support the concept 1,000%, but I support it differently than you do because I want it to be a permanent position, and I want it to be, whether it's an assistant or deputy, I prefer a deputy because that means that there is a set responsibility that you two decide on it, like you become external affairs and your deputies do an internal, and you split up where the pieces are. And then you coordinate. You still coordinate the entire mess. So understand me, when I talk negative against it, it's not against the whole process. It's just what we're doing to get over to the next town.
So, thank you for those comments. I appreciate the feedback. I really do. And in the two years that we discussed this, my position has always been the same, which is I really am struggling to define that role and see what things can I give up, or what roles and responsibilities do I feel like I can fully delegate in a kind of a, let's say, siloed way, but in a relatively autonomous way for that person, and I'm having a hard time with that. Because I think a lot of what we do, a lot of what I do cuts across all different, you know, platforms in the town, and as we sit here now, I still can't tell you like what specific concrete thing that person's going to do because they're going to need my help on a particular issue, just like I'm going to need their help on a particular issue. And Tom, I thank you for, I haven't even reported to the board the fact that I'm, you know, acting as lead negotiator for this regional coalition for trash disposal. I did it, I did it last time around, and truthfully, I say I'm the negotiator. Basically, I go in and Arlene Miller tells me what we should say. But, you know, I think that, you know, the communities have entrusted me with that role, and I'm honored to have their trust. But we'll have a meeting, and we'll kind of go through things, and then I'll leave, and I'll be on to the next thing, and I may not follow up right away or even recall what I'm supposed to follow up on from that meeting where as an assistant or deputy could come to the meeting with me, go through, listen to the whole thing and say, and I can be like, hey, listen, make sure, either make sure I follow up on that, remind me to follow up on that, or listen, can you make that phone call for me and do this, and go ask that person that question. But it's really a real-time thing, and I'm hoping through this process, through this trial, if you will, it'll help me figure out, it'll help me figure out what that role could be and what I could delegate and kind of try, like to try it out a little bit and see what things work as offloaded duties and what don't. It's not that I don't want to figure it out. I would love to have less work to do. Or I'd love to be able to focus in greater detail and for longer on some of the bigger issues. And I'm having, like I said, I just, I can't, any other position, I could come up with a job description. I mean, I think these guys know I'm pretty specific. When I see it, I'm very specific about what I think it should be and what components should be in there. I don't see this one yet, and so I'm hoping. And the other thing is, because I know financially we need to plan in advance for this position, I need to do a better job of defining it before I come and ask you for 100 grand for a deputy. And that's why, but it's also not fair for me to take an employee who has a full-time job and say, by the way, I'm going to give you all this additional work and make you function as a deputy, but I'm not going to compensate you anymore for that. So that's the reason for the stipend. And like I said, if it turns out it doesn't work and I don't get more done and I'm not more efficient, then next year's budget, we won't fund it. It's, you know, I'm not, I don't want to commit to a full term. If the taxpayer isn't getting the maximum benefit out of it, then I don't want to keep doing it. So that's my appeal.
I think that's why I was trying to nail down the roles and responsibilities. That'll almost be part of your exercise as you go through this process, and it'll help communicate with us.
If I promise you that next year's budget, I will deliver you, or even in advance of that, I'll deliver you what I believe to be the roles and responsibilities of a deputy, would that make it better? Because, I mean, I just figured out the first thing I'm going to delegate. Hey, I just got the first task. Thanks, Richard.
Mark?
Stephen, I could beat this one to death, and we shouldn't, but I'll just state my concern is that, you know, I really get the sense that the department heads are working full out. I mean, I, you know, I mean, Chief Dearborn clearly stated it. I've talked with some of the other department heads, and I honestly don't see how we're going to go to a department head and say, you know, on top of that, you're the assistant town manager, and yeah, we're going to compensate them for it, but something's going to give of what they're doing, and they're going to, maybe they're going to end up saying, okay, I need a deputy in my department, you know, and it kind of snowballs, and I just haven't figured that out. Maybe that's my bias of saying, I think everybody here in our town is working, you know, 40 hours a week and then some maybe 60 or 70 hours a week as department heads, and they ought to be because that's the job. This is a big-time job. So that's my concern with the proposal is where the person's coming from and how we expect them to do this on top of everything else. I haven't sorted it out clearly, neither of you, yet, so, you know, we're going to see where that goes.
Yeah, I mean, what my response to that be, and this is what, this is the three-plus-year struggle that I've had with trying to do something, trying to create this position. But I just got to the point where I don't want to let the great be the enemy of the good.
Right, but, you know, I give you my response to some of the things I heard here tonight was that, you know, your job is to help the town of Longmeadow, and I understand that, you know, serving on the regional casino mitigation committee and serving on the regional, you know, emergency management, call center is important, and serving as the lead negotiator for, but at some point you got to say no, and, you know, we can't take on the lead on all of those, even though it's potentially good for the town, potentially beneficial for the town. We can't do that because your primary loyalty is back to the town, and I understand that our tipping fees is a big deal and it costs a lot of money, but I think there are other people who are potentially equally qualified to do that, you know, to you, and I think that becomes the question of what things are uniquely qualified to do that have very, very high return for the town versus those things that you're equally qualified with somebody else and let somebody else in the other towns pick it up. And I know that's a tough thing for some people to say, but there are only 24 hours in the day. And, you know, ultimately, the town pays the price because you get spread too thin. You get paid the price personally as well, so, I mean, it's a tough, it's a tough call. Marie, I have another couple of.
Well, I had two more. My second one is I'm disappointed that the innovation fund is being cut. Now, I know you haven't expended the money yet, but, oh, you have. What did we spend the innovation fund on?
We retained the consultant to help us with the solar farm development of a, some kind of request for qualifications.
Right, and when is that coming out?
He's working on it now.
So we should get that out in the next month, do you think?
Yes, hopefully. Maybe a little more on that, but yeah, sometime hopefully before town meeting is our goal.
But, so you are going to move forward on another innovation project next year. It's just got to be less money.
Yeah.
But you have that in mind because I feel like it's really important to have that little bit of space to be able to move into the next step. I mean, this is going to be huge if we can get that solar.
Yeah. No, like I said, I think when Mark and I were having the conference call with the guy, I was sitting there wondering, you know, how am I going to pay for this? And then I thought, jeez, this is really an innovative thing if we could do this, and I thought it was a good use of that innovation fund because it, now, the contract ended up eating the entire fund, but at least I had it to be able to do that one discrete work item that I know is important. It's an important part of our discussion for our DPW facility replacement, and I didn't have to cut another, you know, thing we were doing or try and scrape it together out of some other line item. Because I do think, especially with the scope of work and the vision that largely Mark laid out for the consultant, it really will be an innovative thing if we're able to pull it off.
And, so how much is left of the innovation fund for this year?
Zero.
Zero? I thought you were just cutting it partially. I didn't realize it was completely.
Oh, no, 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 for FY18?
Yes.
5,000.
That's, okay. You just shocked me. Okay.
No, I think you said this year.
No, for this budget.
It was 8,000. I obligated the 8,000.
But we're still coming down to five.
Again, other lines that have gone up, and, you know, we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, and then a question I ask every year is, you know, you've come in with a balanced budget, and everyone seems to be happy and it's working out great, but behind the scenes you had to cut a lot, and you also had to stop programs from being developed. What did you really have to leave on the table, and your department heads had to leave on the table, that they were disappointed, and you're really hoping to be able to fund it in the next year or two?
The police car, the third police car.
And nothing else? No other programs that they were hoping to move their, expand their services?
The directive was level service. I mean, you think we want to talk about?
Yeah, I know, and again, I had HR, I don't even know if I brought it forward to Stephen. He may have read it, but we really didn't discuss it. I mean, they want to continue with their digitalization of all their records, and that was about a $30,000, and it's not necessarily a budget item, but it was about a $30,000 item that they want to continue. Whether they can get the Community Preservation Act money again is yet to be determined, but that was one thing that was put in the background.
I mean, I think Mario asked for a lot of additional overtime for his guys. We weren't able to do a lot of that.
And overtime would have been spent on field maintenance, or what would have been spent on field maintenance?
I think just to give them the flexibility to do more field work rather than adding. The strategy was instead of adding a position, add additional overtime. We get, I think we did increase it somewhat, but not to the level he wanted. But the big one is the police car. We've, like I said, we're doing what amounts to an experiment to see if these new Explorer Cruisers are going to last longer. Hopefully so, because otherwise if we have a vehicle failure, we're going to have to come back, we have to find a way to do it in mid-year.
Well, and I know that the adult center was looking for expanding to breakfast, and that just was left on the table.
Yeah, I mean, that was a transition thing, to be honest with you, so maybe we'll look at that and form that program a little more fully in the coming year with the new director. And I guess, you know, this is not intended to be glib, but ultimately it would be to pay all these people more, be able to increase wages at the department head level and at the management level. You know, the represented personnel get their COLAs and their contracts built in. When things are tight, it's the non-union folks who end up having a, or not receive COLAs or, you know, things like that. Most of the department heads are at top step, and so all they get in terms of additional compensation for their efforts are COLAs. And like, and I meant what I said. I haven't been a part of a team as good in my 20-something-year career in government. So if there was one thing I'd like to do, it'd be, you know, increase compensation for the senior-level employees, but.
I think the other thing I would add is the Scanting Valley rate came in at 5, and again, I know it's a crap shoot, but if we have bad experience within the Scanting Valley, it may be a double-digit increase next year. So it's kind of, it's kind of offset this year, which is nice, but it does put a little risk in FY19 potentially if there is, there's some bad experience.
Mark?
Yeah, Paul, that's a great straight line into my next two comments. You know, they're more general comments. And one is, you know, and I think I've said this in the past, but my concern that Proposition 2.5, which was, I think ostensibly set up as a ceiling of the, you know, you shall not raise taxes more than 2.5, has essentially become the floor. We will raise taxes 2.5 every year, and, you know, I always think that we ought to be able to bucket that trend, and if there ever was a year to do it, it would have seemed to me that potentially this was a year to do that when we had some favorable things going for us, and yet we chose not to. And what you heard from me tonight were a lot of, you know, Captain Stinkwitz had a, or Chief Stinkwitz had a quick comment with me when I was talking about something that's $7,000. I mean, you know, $7,000 here and $7,000 there, and all of a sudden you're talking real money. And it seemed to me that there were a lot of $7,000 things here, and the reason I say that is because, go back to my comments from a couple of weeks ago, you know, I think we hit a good year this year with a significant reduction in special ed fees and transportation that allowed the schools to only go up, their overall general fund request went up, what, 1.6% or something, when in fact just their salaries and benefits were probably up 3.5% or 4%. And I fear for next year, and maybe, you know, by next year I mean 2019 budget, and maybe I worry about 2019 when the time comes, but having a little bit more leeway in our levy limit by not using it all this year might give us a little bit more next year to go into it. Now, maybe that's your plan, Paul, is in fact if we tax it this year, we actually have it next year.
No, you are not going to lose any capacity. If you did not use it this year, you lost it basically forever, but you don't, you lose FY19's capacity. So you're not really losing anything because you will still go off the calculation based upon what you could have raised in 18.
Right, so, anyway, you know, it just, it's concerning that we've hit this stride, and I think everybody's used to taxes are going to go up 2.5% every year. They do go up 2.5% every year. At least our budget goes up 2.5% every year, and if there ever was a year we might not have been able to have to do that, this might have been it, and yet, you know.
I would say there's still a possibility should the legislature come through. We now have a balanced budget, so if that legislature comes through with another X amount of dollars or a new growth comes in, that will give you the opportunity to stay underneath the levy limit should so desire. And again, the legislature normally comes through, and our new growth estimates have historically been conservative, too.
Right, but that money ends up going into free cash, and then we spend it in the fall.
No, it would have to be appropriated.
Well.
Because we have a balanced budget right now.
Appropriate it in the fall, as we have every year.
And yes, I will put together a warrant article to appropriate it.
But we have the chance to do it.
But you're right. You have a decision whether you want to do it or not.
Okay. Said my piece for the year again.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Is there a motion to?
It's all moved.
At the public hearing, is there a second?
Close the hearing?
Suspend the hearing, close the hearings.
Yeah, second.
Okay, all those in favor? And now we're, do we need to reopen Debbie to the regular meeting? And now we're, do we need to reopen, Debbie, to the regular meeting?
Yeah, because you have a motion to close.
Is there a motion to open? Is there a second? Discussion, all those in favor? All right, we're back in the warrant. So, we're.
We were kicking around Stormwater.
Yes.
We're gonna keep running on the May Bowl on that one.
So, we were down to two decisions on whether we were going to put the Stormwater Utility and just limit it to MS4 or we were going to put out the whole program.
And that was really the last decision point for the warrant, other than the stuff that we were going executive session for then.
And the Article Six.
You got it coming up here, Mike.
So, is there a motion to put the Stormwater Utility on the warrant with the limitation of MS4 or just to put it on the warrant and begin discussion in town?
Can I ask something before that? I wonder, we have an awful lot of controversial items on this warrant, seems like, coming up. Is this the wise time to put that one in, Tuesday?
It would be Wednesday, isn't that it?
No, I think it's still a Tuesday night. Oh, no, that is a Wednesday night, that is a Wednesday night item. It would be the second night. You know, Richard, if, if I knew then what I know now, last year, especially with, I mean, to me, the, the game changer is the diff in terms of the warrant and things that have added to the level of complexity. So, if I knew then what I know now, I would maybe say, yeah, maybe we need to hold off. I mean, is this, is this a crisis thing where we just won't be able to do what we need to do without the Stormwater Utility? No. Is it something that's gonna go stale if we don't do it right away? No. We can, we can leave it in the can, do it in the fall, do it next spring.
But I understood the MS4 is coming in, we're gonna have the cost of a.
This year, I mean, we're spending money already on this.
We're sp, I mean.
So, we're already getting into the hole and by next year, we'll be into a hole 100, 150,000, you're saying?
Well, I don't say in the hole, we are absorbing in the general fund currently.
I guess I was talking about the capacity for acceptance.
Oh, okay.
That was my only concern.
I think what I would recommend, Richard, it's on, we put on the second night for that reason because we have a lot of major things on the first night. I think, to me, presenting it to the town, going through it, discussing it, explaining the, what it's all about, the merits of it. And then if a select board member, after the motion is made, a select board member gets up and says, I moved to lay in the table. No, there's no debate, just gets voted on. If you feel like the room is not ready for it, then the board member can get up and say, I moved to lay in the table. And then the, the original motion made by the, another board member, or maybe the same board member, it gets voted on.
I guess my concern is not even that. It's the concern that the public's gonna have so many other issues that they're, they're just unwilling to even listen and have a discussion, they're just arbitrarily thrown out.
I think because it's on the second night, we'll have, and it's the second or third article, the way we have it ordered. And we did that to try and give this a little more time and a little more breathing room.
Yeah.
But if it seems like people are really hostile towards it, then we can pull it.
Okay, that's my only concern.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I do think, I genuinely believe that we are going to need to do this at some point in time in the next few years. We don't need to do it today, but it would be helpful to have the structure in a non-impactful way like I just described.
Right.
So, then when we do need it, in a, from a financial standpoint, it's there. But I do think, because it is a complex thing, it may, we may need to explain, go over a couple of meetings with town, a couple of different sessions with town meeting to get it done.
And the residents have been reaching out, saying, find other sources other than the taxes, solve the financial problem we're heading towards. And it might not be one they're, they're pleased to hear about, or we might be surprised the, I did not think the original.
That's gonna fund an unfunded mandate, that's the problem. It doesn't help our taxes, it's just, it's offset.
It's a fee, yeah.
Well, it helps, yeah.
It will help, so, and I guess, I don't know, I mean, people don't like when we do this. We have a former select board member accused us of claiming the sky was falling by, by talking about our, our mill rate, our levy limit.
The sky did fall on that person.
Yeah. So, I mean, we talked last year extensively about hitting the levy cap because we had projected that was gonna be within five years. We had a favorable assessment or certification of our assessment from DOR, raised at 6%. That pushed it out a year or two. And we all kind of breathed a sigh of relief. But I know we haven't forgotten that a year or two really isn't all that long in the grand scheme of things. And it is things like a cell phone tower in the middle of town and a Stormwater Utility that are the difficult decisions that the town is going to need to make to sustain services in those years beyond that, when we hit 25. Now, and if, and Mark, you've talked about making legislative change, yeah, let's do that, too. But if that doesn't happen, then will people be willing to pay an extra Stormwater fee? Because I said, we're, we're spending over a million dollars on it today without MS4. MS4 is about another 150. Would people be willing to pay extra Stormwater fee so their class sizes can stay a reasonable level, so we can continue to maintain high-level police services? I think in this community, they probably would, but you need to have that structure in place. And that's why it being a fee instead of a tax is the exact thing that will help it sustain the community long-term. And so, that's why I think we need to engage the community because it is a major change and there is gonna be resistance to it. And they may not do it this time around, but at least they know it's there as we get closer to that day.
Guess my only question would be if it was, I don't know how warrants, if they get voted down and then they show up another time, you know, do they have a possibility of winning in the future or?
Did you leave before the fluoride votes?
I, yes, I know the fluoride vote, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Bruce Randall, may he rest in peace.
I'm not the moderator, I guess, I guess town council could weigh in there, but to me, each warrant is its own unique instrument and you can put on stuff that from past warrants all you want.
Weekend, town.
Select Board can.
But I don't know what success they have in future votes, though.
I read someplace there was a time limit imposed after it's.
For petition, for citizen petitions.
Was it citizens' petitions only?
Yes.
I see what Tom's trying to say is if we set it up for failure and it fails, will it always fail? Well, I think maybe if people aren't comfortable with it now, next year, if we have to start cutting teachers, they suddenly might become comfortable with it. So, it's almost like this is the way of engaging the community. I was really surprised that the warrant in the fall passed to, it was last fall, wasn't it, where we put the money in to establish this because no one had heard Stormwater Utility? And I thought, well, this is gonna go down because we haven't engaged the public. But the one woman who resident, who understood it, explained it very clearly, ended up passing. It was controversial, but it passed. I think this is a way of engaging our residents.
Let's just see, I mean, we can, you can't, you won't know how a town meeting feels until you put it in front of them. That's your choice. And maybe you have, you put the bylaw in and make the fee zero in the first year.
That will seem disingenuous.
But if it's a bylaw, I mean, you have to adopt the bylaw. It's not like you can just oppose the fee, that's, that's the key thing. We have, we have to have the debate on the bylaw.
Is there a motion to put this in or not?
Yeah, I move to put it in and we, and we move it into discussion, see if it's killed there.
Okay, is there a second?
No, second.
Okay. Do people feel we should put it in with zero, just establish the bylaw, or the MS4 or the full?
I feel very comfortable in the justification of it based on repayment for MS4 because that's very factual at this point. It's very truthful and it's something we know is there. And the sum of money is not that, that major, not really.
We have, like I said, we're calking about 150. I did round it to 200, I can, I can keep it 150.
But even, even if, even if the future years only took it up as much as the MS4 unless something catastrophic happened.
Yeah, I think that, that's fine.
And, but for the average homeowner that's, for the year, that's 12 times that amount? Is that what we're talking about? No?
No, it would be, I mean, you could look at it a monthly rate.
Of how much?
Or an annual rate, or a biannual rate because we only build water twice a year. You could, so 12 bucks a month would have been 72 bucks a water bill. So, on your water bill, you get an extra $6 to charge and that, that was the fee that we proposed that would pay for really almost all of our costs.
David, I was gonna say, that's, that's several million there, though.
No, it was just, it was just a million. We'd still be about a half a million short.
You're talking about close to $100 per household?
144, it was $10 a month.
$15 a month per household would have covered it full.
But if we go down to the MS4 to 150, 200, that would be divided by five, so it's only $12 a year?
No, probably like $2 or $3 a month.
Okay.
I mean, absolutely, calculation, but it would be, if it's 144, you divide that by five, you know, that's $28 a year, you know, that's $2.50 a month.
Yeah, it'd be, so 12 bucks a month generated about 1.1. 150 is about 10% of that, a little less, a little more than 10%.
Not 12 a month.
12 a month would have generated about.
12 months is 144 a year.
Yeah, so one-sixth of that is two. Six times 150 is?
I've lost somebody, you're trying to do.
900.
Six times 150, I don't even know.
What are you talking about? We're talking about, how much per year? You said 25, $30?
It was like $2.53, it's a number.
And it's not, the problem is because we have that graduated scale for the large, larger properties, you can't just say like times, times 58, like you can for water charges.
Right.
So, it's, like I said, I, I can, I can get the numbers to the board probably by the end of the week, but it's, it'll be a, it, it's really just, once you make the decision to say we're gonna do it and have the fee, proposed fee reflect 150,000, 200,000, give me the number for MS4 costs, we'll backfill the formula and tell you what the monthly fee is, but it's gonna be in the $2 to $3 range.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna like do a bait and switch where we say, you know, bring people in at a low rate and then, you know, jump it up. I think we should be honest, you know, if it's gonna be about $12 a month, you know, we should be close to that range. We don't wanna be too low or too high.
It's only gonna be about $2.
$2 a month.
Tom, it's, it's gonna be what the board says it's gonna be, so I mean, the bait and switch is up to you guys. If you guys don't wanna bait and switch, don't do it.
Well, yeah, no, you said represents the MS4 cost.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not bait and switch, I mean, that's whatever the cost, you said 150,000 or so.
So, if it's, yeah, if it's 150,000, that would be great, I think. Because, you know, and then if it has to go up, you know, gradually from that, but, but I wouldn't wanna say zero and then have it go up.
We'll have a number for Monday.
We will have a number for Monday.
Okay.
So, any further discussion on the motion to put on the warrant?
Yeah, I guess my discussion is, my question is about the bureaucracy for managing this. Are we turning, are we going to need essentially a board of what, of Stormwater assessors for people saying, asking for rebates and a, and an evaluation?
I mean, the bylaw.
Right, it has all that stuff that you can appeal it, that you can base, you know.
But it's set by the select board, authority.
So, we'll be hearing rebate arguments?
I think the DPW is the initial.
Yeah. In terms of rebate, the DPW is the, is the front line for that.
I mean, I just have a sense that.
You will hear a few, I'm sure.
The select board sets the parameters for what, what can be granted rebates and the, and the Department of Public Works executes those policies, carries out those policies.
So, we'll have to put together some policies after this is approved.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna, there's gonna be a lot of issue, I think there's gonna be a lot of issues about, you know, what's permeable, what's not permeable, what's.
Most communities just, that's why the Mass GIS overlay, is we don't get into that because every, every other community that's doing Massachusetts is just using that because it's, it's a, whether it's 100% accurate or not, it's consistent. And then you don't have to spend money on engineers going out with tape measures. You know, and I think the other thing is some communities, many communities we learned, don't do rebates because it gets kind of gradient.
It's gonna get very, I, I'll, I'll tell you, the first thing I'm gonna do is take out my driveway and put in one of those gratings with, with grass.
For 12.
And the first thing I'm gonna do, start a business to do just that.
Right. No, no, seriously, but I can see.
It's not gonna save you any money in your house.
You're still gonna be.
Paying money, are you?
But it won't save me, but it will save somebody who's got a parking lot or, or a church or a, a, a school that has a parking lot who can now use one of those, you know, plastic grading things that they put on.
Yeah, let's be clear, the only people that are gonna really benefit from any kind of rebate are the large-scale properties because every house is one unit. So, the only people that are gonna benefit are churches, schools, town, you know, you can do, like, but we have to frame that out a little bit based on what's out there and what are the potential for rebates. It's not gonna be that complicated, listen. There's like 1,500 of these in the country, did Tracy say? I mean, other people have figured this out. We get, in the long run, we always get these discussions, like somehow it's only ever hap, if it didn't happen here, it doesn't matter and we have to figure it all out original for ourselves. And I fall into that trap many times when this has already been figured out, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, we'll just have to find the system that's been created that works best for us.
And we'll have some time, a couple of months, to put those policies together.
Yeah, this isn't gonna be in effect until FY '19 either.
Okay, so we'll have some time.
Yep.
But I was, I was surprised that decks were considered that because, you know, as I look under my deck, it's all soft soil, it's not compressed, it would absorb a lot of water, but just because there's a deck over it, you know, I just, you know, like, yeah, it doesn't seem quite right, but.
But that's why we, that's why all houses are one unit because we don't have to get into how many angels can dance on the head of an impervious pin.
We've lost a member, should we wait for the vote?
You lost the motioner.
That's true, we lost our motioner.
First he was a motioner, now he's a mover. See what I did there, Debbie?
While we're, while we're waiting.
It's a tough one, I think.
Yeah.
It's a tough one.
Well, the other thing is we can wait until Monday when we have a full board. You wanna do that?
Yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't we do that? Richard will have to come back and withdraw his motion because it was moved, or you just do it, just get it on the warrant. I think Bill was generally, well, I think he's getting feedback on it, but.
Well, I, the other thing, the discussion to have is regards the budget. Are we gonna vote on Article Six now or are we gonna wait for a full board? Wait, there was, there was a weird sound going on in the room.
I don't see any, any reason to wait unless you want, just think Bill needs to go on the record.
Show must go on.
Or against it.
If this was last year and it was really controversial, like it was last year, I would agree that, I don't think there's anything that, to me, I don't think there was anything, even, you, Mark, you asked, you know, good detailed questions, but nothing jumped off the page as deal breakers.
And the Finance Committee, did they come up with any?
They still reviewing it.
They're still reviewing it.
But truthfully, all they've seen is town manager's budget. Once this becomes the select board's budget, that's when they do their official review Review, because they make a recommendation of select board budget.
Oh, they do? Okay.
First year, least paid.
Yeah, but you can see that there were residents who showed up in numbers, because they thought the budget was controversial.
You know, but, but that's part of the problem, is that, you know, when we balance the budget, we just say, well, it's balanced, let's pass it, that doesn't mean it's a perfect budget, just means it's a balanced budget, and, and, you know, and I think if anybody else had, you know, if, if five people did the budget, they'd come up with five different numbers, here, there, or different departments, so, like I said, I, you know, I continue to have questions about, about things like the town manager's assistant, you know, the assistant town manager, I'm not sure that that's worth doing, and we're saying, well, it's just $7,500, and let's trust Stephen and, and go with it, and, and Tom, you think it's a great idea, but it's $7,500, you know, and, and, you know, and this is 7,500, and something else is $7,500, and, and, you know, how do we know that we're getting our 7,500, or the town's getting, taxpayer's $7,500 out of all, all these individual items, and it's, it's tough to say, but, but the budget's balanced, so I guess we shouldn't, shouldn't complain, but, in fact, I'm not really.
Well, I think, also, when we review things, and we express our concerns, this helps set up the staff for understanding where our directives might be next year, or our concerns, and what we're going to be looking at, and I think one of the things we've been working on, at least I have, behind the scenes, is roles and responsibilities, and our organizational charge, so this will be an interesting, interesting new thing, and seeing where the roles and responsibilities, and how that person is, and.
Yeah, well, I think that, like, if you hire a fundraiser, you know, you, you look at how much money they bring into the organization, you know, and so we say, we're going, we're going to empower Stephen to do better negotiation for our town, with things like the trash owner's contract, and, you know, I think we'll see some return, if we all see a return, like you said, then we could just sort of turn the wheel back on this, but.
I can't imagine wheels turning back.
It doesn't take that much time to, to recoup $7,500, that kind of money, I don't think that's, when you look at some of the negotiations that are going to be happening, so.
And maybe, I don't find the right fit, can't get the roles and responsibilities, you guys don't want to confirm, you don't want to confirm the appointment, and it comes back to treasury in free cash next year.
Right, but Stephen, let's make, be clear about one thing, the, the town charter sets up the position of town manager, and doesn't set up a position of, of assistant town manager, deputy town manager, whatever we want to call it, this is something that you're creating to assist you, but from our perspective, at least, I'll speak for myself, from my perspective, and from the, the, from the charter's perspective, it comes, it's yours, it's your job, I mean, you know, you don't get to say, well, they didn't do their job, don't, you know, they're the assistant town manager, that's, that's, there, there is no.
Oh, no, it's, it's like procurement, I'm, I'm the chief procurement officer, but Chad Thompson does virtually all of the procurement.
Under your guidance.
Yeah, and if he doesn't do it, it's my responsibility.
Right, okay, as long as we.
Let's go back to the motion, we're, we're discussing on whether you should table it until Monday.
Or just, or just push it through.
The stormwater.
Yeah, how do you feel?
I'm in favor of pushing it on through, going for a vote.
Okay.
I mean, we've, we've talked it, unless there's a strong opposition, I mean, we are, we are lacking one member.
All right, we just wanted to, it's your, it's your motion, so you could decide.
Okay, let's go with it.
Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, and now, the second question we had was, how do you feel about whether we vote on the budget today, or we should wait till we have a full board?
Well, we get a full board, there's no reason not to vote with a full board.
And how does everyone else feel?
He's missed all the discussion.
Yeah, what's going to change? I, I vote on the budget as proposed.
Is that a motion?
No, I, I just said I'm with.
She said so moved.
Nice try.
So is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, there's a motion on the floor to accept the budget as presented by the town manager.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
I was going to go further discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I saw the hand go this way.
I just want you to lose, Richard.
Okay, go ahead, Richard.
I have one annoying thing, but I'm going to be a team player, but I have the one annoying thing, which I shared with you, about the deputy and all, but I will, I will go ahead and vote in favor of the budget.
That's the same thing.
But I, I, I just, I don't, I don't, I like the concept, but I don't like the implementation plan.
Since we can only ask for the money once a year, I would ask then, that if the board approves the budget, I would commit to keeping the board involved in the, in the discussions on it, maybe when I get closer to making an appointment, and, and look for your guidance on roles and responsibilities, and make sure that you have some, I don't say buy-in, but just make sure that I'm reporting on it, and if you feel like what I've set up isn't going to be worth a while, then we don't do it, and we return the money to treasury next year in free cash.
And for the record, there are plenty of position descriptions out there for deputies and assistants to town managers.
Sure.
We don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Steven, you bought my, you earned my vote.
Matter of fact, I even have one, if you'd like a copy of it.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I'm sure.
Any further discussion? I'll watch the hands carefully, now.
We voted.
All those in favor? Okay.
You are quick on the draw.
Well, I saw the hand go up, I thought you were starting to vote.
So we need to vote to go on to executive session to not return to open session?
Can I just ask one thing? You folks are going to have to consider at some point in time, on Article 10, will we allocate the DPW, you have to talk about the allocations.
I think we need to go back to open session afterwards.
Wait, what DPW?